Thank you all for coming out this afternoon, this evening. And I now ask the clerk to please call the row.
Harold Brown.
Present.
Maxine Drew.
Present.
Janie Humphries.
Here.
Brenda Jones.
Present.
Wanda Brown and Paige.
Present.
Alina Nguyen.
Here.
Stacy Agar.
Thank you. Can we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Now, I'd like to take approval of the regular agenda.
So move.
No, I have a question. Can I ask, do I ask that before or after she made the motion, or can I say it now?
You can say it.
Okay, my concern, I didn't see it, or you tell me where I can look for it. In terms of the Morgan Hunter, we were told it would be on this agenda, it was not. And I'd like to know when that will be on the agenda, because we had people asking us about applying, and what are the rules, what's the protocol? I can't tell them anything unless we know something. And I didn't see it on this agenda. So is it somewhere, and it's called something else, so I can look at it? I would appreciate that.
Ms. Brownlee Page, I moved that agenda item to the 12th, so that the team would have a more thorough report for you. Please refer any interested parties to the Human Resources Department. They are taking applications. As of today, we had 135 applications, so they are taking applications and working through the process. It will not be listed under Morgan Hunter. That contract has been canceled, so it substitutes for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools through our HR department. But we'll have that report for you at the next regular meeting.
Which will be June?
June the 12th.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Second. Motion's been made, and second, to approve the regular agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. Communications, Dr. Lane.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Good evening, Board. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It's wonderful to see so many partners in the House. And if you are already over the heat, tell your neighbor, "I'm over the heat." Feels like July and May, doesn't it? We are very glad that you're here tonight to join us for our meeting. And Board, we have several reports from our key partners, and so we're really pleased that so many have been able to join us this evening. Board, as you know, we just finished our graduation ceremonies. So congratulations to you for successful school year. We saw nearly 1,000 students graduate over the last couple of weeks, and it certainly was uplifting. It was very inspiring to see so many of those young people graduating Diploma Plus. So thank you for your participation in those ceremonies and helping us to congratulate our graduates and their families. Also wanted to be sure that you're aware that our F.L. Schlegel Immigration Rights Forum and Health Fair, that student-led initiative that you had the opportunity to participate in, received a third-place award in the Lead to Feed Program sponsored by David Novak, who's co-founder and former CEO of Yum Brands. Anybody know Yum Brands and what that is?
Yeah, we've heard of it.
Potato chips.
Potato chips, Pizza Hut, Taco Bell, KFC. So we're really proud that their work was being recognized. So well done to the Schlegel Stallions. Also wanted to make sure that the Board and community are aware of our new Degree in Three Pathway Program. Thanks to Sarah Ryder and the Diploma Plus team, we are going to be engaging in a partnership with University of Kansas Edwards Campus and the Community College to allow our students to have a seamless transition from early college classes at high school through the Community College and on to KU Edwards Campus. We're very excited about this opportunity, and I sent an email to you all last week inviting you to join for the official signing ceremony. So if you can attend, that would be wonderful. So I outlined for you, Board, the criteria for that program in your communications. Also wanted to thank Mr. Kirk Allen. He's the President and CEO of Sloan Valve. His company donated over $9,000 worth of plumbing fixtures for the renovations at Sumner. We're really thankful for that. Yes, that deserves a round of applause. If you see Dave Olend, who's a teacher at Sumner, you might thank him, because he personally initiated this connection so that we could redirect some of the bond funds to other things and use Mr. Allen's valves to make those restrooms look beautiful. So thank you, Mr. Allen. Wanted to remind the Board that summer school begins for most on Monday for middle and high schools. We do have a few elementary schools who started their summer program today, so that's well underway. And our summer feeding program began today, too. So you should see our food trucks moving about the community, providing meals to all who seek them. Provided you a copy of the bond renovation, relocations of the administrators in your communications. We have several schools that are closed due to the construction, and so the administrators and their administrative support teams are relocated across the district. Their same telephone number works, but wanted you to have the actual location in case you want to reach out to any of those building principals. And then finally, this evening, Board, we have for you at your place the list of salaries for all administrative employees, as requested by Dr. Nguyen. It includes name, position, their base salary, and any additional compensation that they may receive.
It's in their.
So that is posted for you in Board Docs. And if you have a question about that, please let me know, and we'll be glad to answer your questions. So thank you, Board, and congratulations on completing a very successful school year.
Thank you, Dr. Lane. As Dr. Lane has already stated, been busy at the end of school year with the, all the graduations. I attended all the graduations except for, was it Bridges?
Bridges.
Because they conflicted with one graduation I had to do myself, Reach 500. But they were, it was very inspiring to see, especially, see all our young people, my babies, but even more so to see the alternative schools graduating, more students coming through, getting their degrees. Reach 500 had a total of 73 students, which 43 of them attended. It was quite inspiring to see these people and hear their young, the people give their testimonies about them dropping out and what made them go back to school to get their degree, their high school diploma. So it was very, very warming, heartwarming, to see this happening. So that in mind, and at this time, if any other Board members have anything they need to...
I'd just like to say that I really enjoyed going to all those graduations. And I'd like to thank the families for letting their children come to our schools and sharing such a happy time. Because when you, the kids looked happy, but when you looked out in the audience and saw the parents and the community members, they were so proud of their kids. And it was just like a two-for-one. Happy kids, but ecstatic parents. Having so much fun.
Well, I attended Danica Elementary Promotion for pre-K students, and I also attended Northwest Middle School 8th Grade Promotion. And for the very first time since I graduated from high school, I went to the F.L. Schlegel Promotion, Graduation Service, as well as Sumner Academy. And the exciting thing for me was to be able to see them graduating, but also their parents were former students of mine. That was a blessing for me. I had the, at Sumner Academy, I was the one who passed out the diplomas, and I was real, I really felt honored to be able to do that. And so therefore, I'm looking forward to being able to be present again next year.
Thank you. Any other?
Madam President, first, let me apologize for my phone ringing. In the legislature, I would have to buy snacks for everybody, but we're not in the legislature. You'll still take snacks. I have three items, please. The first is that the committee to discuss the review of the administrative tier will meet on Thursday, May 31st, at 8:00 a.m. here at the central office. So we'll find a conference room. Secondly, we need to determine a date for the last listening tour, for those workers who feel that they were not heard. And our June month is just really tight, but we really need to determine a date for that. And then third, I'd like to make a statement that is very serious. It's serious about how we have been performing our duties and the response of some who criticize. Once again, I and four of the newly-elected Board members by association are being criticized for doing our duly-elected job, namely for asking questions of the administration and staff in order for us to make informed decisions in our efforts to improve student achievement. It seems, it appears, that we are considered members of the team if we sit quietly and do not ask questions. If we ask questions, we're considered to be put off the team. The election of November 2017 was a referendum on change. All along the campaign trail, citizens asked if there really was going to be change this time, or was it going to be the same old song? On November 8th, four highly-educated individuals were elected and sworn in in January. Since January, I and four of these newly-elected Board members have performed our duties within the strict confines of Kansas statutes and accepted protocol. And what has not occurred is, from some, due respect, from some administration, some staff, public statements have been made about the Board in public, in writing, in the press, that are plain and simply insulting and derogatory. Let me give you an example, story of credit cards. Now, I have, historically, been deaf on credit cards. We were told that there were approximately 150 credit cards. The next thing we hear from teachers and community that we, the Board, were going around picking them up. Now, not only is that ridiculous, we didn't know who had credit cards.
It was said.
But one thing is a fact, the Board members did not start the rumor. And it had to come from somebody. You go figure. But stories like these are constantly being spread throughout the community without facts. Let me state again what recently I questioned, and I asked for an opinion from our attorney, Greg Gohean. Kansas Statute 72-1138 provides local boards of education with broad authority to conduct business and adopt policies appropriate to perform their constitutional duties to maintain, develop, and operate local public schools. KSA 72-1163 requires that local boards prepare and submit a budget and summary of the budget. Now, there's a recent article in the Pitch, and I welcome everyone to read it. There was a question about me asking for credentials. I asked for a ruling. Mr. Gohean looked at the statutes and stated, "There is no statute that would prohibit the Board from reviewing personnel information in an executive session, at the same time being aware that personnel information does carry with it special privacy rights." In short, there is no statutory prohibition against discussing an individual's credentials or qualifications for a position in executive session. Unfortunately, there was some incorrect information provided publicly. I am now correcting the record. Mr. Gohean provided the language, excuse me, the direction to the statutes and review the state statutes. Finally, let me say, there is always freedom of the press. There is always people who are entitled to their opinions, but they're not entitled to dispute facts. We welcome community input, but they must go deeper than slogans, and they must delve into the heart, sometimes unpleasant data, like student scores on ACT or scores on state assessments. We must strive to help all students perform at college and career readiness levels, not just a few. Our job is to the 22,000 students, and we take them seriously. Some of us are committed to putting dollars into the classroom, dollars into making our schools a safe learning environment. Most of our teachers are not social workers, not child psychologists or counselors, nor are they security guards or law enforcement officers. Our teachers do not need to have classrooms with 26 to 45 students, nor do they need to bankrupt their own households buying supplies when we see dollars spent on line items that are labeled "supplies and materials." When asked for clarification, I don't get an answer, and that sometimes it's just said it's been budgeted. Furthermore, we have asked to consider hiring security guards in addition to LEO. We have not had time to address that issue. Let me be clear. I and some of the newly-elected Board members are concerned with all aspects of learning, and those of us who ask questions, we will continue to ask questions. We will continue to demand answers so that we can make changes to protect students, teachers, and the community who voted us into office. Our questions are not responsible for the mistakes. Our questions are not responsible for people leaving the district. Our questions are trying to get at the causes and trying to correct the reasons that people want to leave the district. While some of you are disturbed that we ask so many questions, I think it was written that we also ask the same questions over and over. One explanation is that sometimes we don't get the answers. Most important is that members of the community ask us for answers. And if we cannot get the answers from administration and staff, then from whom? I and some of the newly-elected members will continue to ask questions, I've said this before. And for those of us who are falsely accused in the press and the local blogs, one thing is a fact, we will not be intimidated. There are 22,000 students who depend upon us. In case you have forgotten, this is not my first rodeo. In 2015, I stood up for the Dreamers. Nine men tried to censor me. Nine men tried to kick me out of the legislature for standing up for educational opportunities. So I will continue to stand up for educational opportunities. And in case you don't remember, Dr. Martin Luther King said, "The ultimate measure of a man is not where he stands in moments of comfort and convenience, but where he stands at times of challenge and controversy." Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you.
I had a comment, too.
Okay.
And I've asked this before. We were elected in November, sworn in in January, and after a month, we, too, were questioning again about asking questions. And I'd like to ask Mr. Gohean, we have our handbook, is there anywhere in this book that says that we cannot ask questions? Somebody, please tell me. Because I didn't get the memo that you couldn't.
No, there's nothing.
Okay. And you said that before.
Right.
So I just want people to know, we're going to ask questions. If you're insulted that we ask them, I'm sorry you feel that way. But we were chosen to represent the people. We're going to ask questions, because we want, again, what's best for these kids. You don't have to agree with us. Everybody has their opinion. But if we ask the question, we expect an answer. And what I've seen, and again, it's already been stated, people are highly offended that we're trying to micromanage. We're trying to understand, because a lot of times when we get the information, it is not clear. And we keep asking, because we're trying to figure it out. And we want, just like everybody else, we all say we're here for the kids. And we got to work together and make it work. Because the way it's going now, it's not going that way, and it's not just us. So if we really care, then let's make it work. If asked a question, answer the question. I don't care what business you're in, unless you own it. Answer the question. We're trying to figure it out. And if we work together, we can really do some good things. And another thing I didn't like, I don't appreciate the reference to Kansas City, Missouri. I worked there for a year. And they're doing some good things. They're not always given the credit that they deserve, but we got to work it out, and we have to work together. Because a house divided will not stand, and it's not just us. You know, when you point out, something's pointing back. So we got to work it out, because we're supposedly here for these children. We have to work it out. And I know the Board, the shade has turned a little bit, and it makes you wonder. And I don't want to think that, just because there's six black people sitting here, that that's a problem. I don't want to believe that. I'm hoping, this is the 21st century, something better. But I'm seeing something else, and it does make you wonder. I don't know. I'm trying to figure it out. Thank you.
I attended the graduation ceremony for Fairfax Learning Center, and it was really good. I really appreciated seeing all the students. I gave the address for the students, and it was so great to meet them and to get further information. The nice thing about them is that they start a biography, before they get started in school, the first meeting, they create a biography about themselves. And upon graduation, right before they graduate, they do a reflection. And I found that so interesting, how their minds and thoughts changed, even some of them who were able to only be there for a year, from when they first started to when they graduated, how their minds changed, how their thoughts had changed, and how their perceptions about the community and themselves had changed. So it was so wonderful being a part of that celebration. It was standing room only, as others had said, which was awesome. And then after the event was over, got a chance to stay and mingle with the family. So that was very great to see. In between meetings, I did send Dr. Lane a couple of questions, so I appreciate her answering some of those questions. One was about the article relating to Kansas City, Kansas grades, as some of the constituents had sent to me to be aware of it, in which I was able to get additional clarification from Dr. Lane to provide information back to constituents about some papers that are not adequately reporting the information, and then how we can do our due diligence in-house to make sure that our students are college-ready and prepared as early as possible to be successful. So that's what we're here for, is to make sure the students have a successful life beyond high school. There were a couple of other issues that I had sent to her. Some people contacted me about resignations and things that we're talking about today. And I appreciate Dr. Lane for responding quickly to some concerns and the rumors about that. So I look forward to having additional communication about when these situations may occur, to maybe discuss a little more about how we can get that information before constituents come to us, so we can have that forethought. But I appreciate being able to have numerous people contact me and be able to say, okay, well, what's really going on? And filter out things, because the reality is, everything is not true what you read. Some things are true, some things are not true. And I think that, as others have said, take a look and really dig deep into our overall goals and what we're trying to do as a Board, and the things that we have done to help promote student learning. So thank you again for that quick feedback and update about thoughts and ideas on how we can improve student learning and how we can continue to help our students be successful here in the community.
Thank you. Any other? Okay.
I would like to, I did the graduation ceremony at Bridges, and I was really encouraged by the fact that individuals at Bridges are individuals that kind of fell out of the mainstream. They had some behavioral issues. And I think I want to thank Dr. Lane for coming up with the vision of creating that haven for them, because by giving them the opportunity, and what was really encouraging to me is to see how they respond to that opportunity. They understand that they've had some challenges, and they understood, you know, after the ceremony that there would still have some challenges before them. But thanks to having that place to go when they really could, didn't fall in the mainstream, it was fabulous. And they were really kind of, it was, you know, we really had probably seven, eight, nine students, but the multipurpose room was full. Parents attended, and they also got an opportunity to see their child. It showed some progression. They saw their child being successful. And that was one great thing about that graduation ceremony, is a lot of these individuals haven't really acquired a whole lot of, who haven't really, haven't acquired a lot of success or haven't experienced success, and they got a taste of being successful. So I was really impressed with the whole process. I think it was something that was very inspirational to me, but I think it was also inspirational for them to see people from the school board there to really support them. And so I just had a great time.
Very good. And as you may not know, every year, graduations, you enjoy doing that one, where you'll be switched to another school or whatever. So you'll get the experience and see some of these, the different schools and what they go through. So thank you all very much. Now we come to community comments. We have Daniel Silva, President and CEO of the Kansas City, Kansas Chamber.
Hello, everyone.
Hello.
Again, as stated, my name is Daniel Silva, and I'm the President and CEO of the KCK Chamber of Commerce. I had the pleasure of interviewing some of you all as you all were up for election this past fall, so good to see you all again. Stand before you, representing 500-plus members, some of which are in this room today. And we really just want to reiterate our commitment to not just the school district, but to meaningful partnerships. We've been working hard to continue to make our chamber a more proactive and inclusive chamber, and one that reflects the community in which we operate in. And so we look forward to working with this Board and continuing that partnership. Do you want to make a quick note? Dr. Lane, I want to thank you for your leadership and support. It's been a pleasure, in my two-and-a-half years in this role, to have you sit on our Board, and we look forward to the new superintendent taking a place on our Board and really engaging with the business community. As you know, this pipeline starts through the school district and ultimately ends up with our small business owners and our large corporations. So we look forward to continuing to form a meaningful partnership with you all. At this point, I'd like to turn my time over to Mr. Craig Gaffney, who is the Regional President of Country Club Bank and our 2018 Board Chair. Mr. Gaffney?
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
As Daniel indicated, my name's Craig Gaffney, and I'm here this evening on behalf of our Kansas City, Kansas area Chamber of Commerce and our Board of Directors, which again, as Daniel mentioned, I have the privilege of being the 2018 Board Chair. Besides Daniel and myself, we're joined by several of our Chamber Executive Committee members this evening. Tony Privatara, who is with Mark Wint electric and is the 2019 Board Chair-elect, Mike Smallwood, and Monsignor Stuart Swetlin. On a personal note, I'm a proud native of Kansas City, Kansas, and Wyandotte County. And while I'm a product of the parochial school system here in KCK, my late father and late brother were both graduates of Wyandotte High School. As several of you may be aware, and Daniel references, I've been a longtime banker in this community, and for the last almost 25 years, I've been involved with our KCK Chamber and now serving for a second time as our Chamber Board Chair. During my tenure of involvement with our chamber, the Kansas City, Kansas School District has been a significant strategic partner of our chamber. And if my memory serves me correctly, during that time, every superintendent has served on our Chamber Board of Directors and has been an integral part of our Board. In light of the workforce development issue that Daniel mentioned, their priority, not only for our chamber, but our sister organization, Wyandotte Economic Development Council, that houses in our chamber building in downtown KCK, we are clearly focused on who the next superintendent of schools will be for USB 500. Our chamber leadership is requesting an opportunity to meet the final candidates for superintendent that will follow in Dr. Lane's footsteps. The graduates of the Kansas City, Kansas School Districts are our members' future employees, and so we believe, just as you do, that we have much at stake in who the future leader of the district is, and would like to offer our diverse perspective and perspectives and backgrounds in your superintendent's search to the school district board. Myself, Donley College President, Monsignor Stuart Swetlin, whose institution also has a longstanding relationship with the KCK School District, and Michael Smallwood, our Legislative Affairs Committee Chair, and a fourth-generation KCK family business owner, as well as being a product of the Kansas City, Kansas School District, recently attended a community recently attended a community conversation here at the district offices with the search firm you engaged, and offered our thoughts on what we believe the key competencies of our next superintendent should be in order to be successful in that role. And we expressed our desire at that meeting as well to meet and offer questions and perspectives to the candidate finalists. Given the longstanding relationship of our chamber with USD 500, we are keenly focused on the school district, the school board, and the selection of our next superintendent. Given other surrounding school districts have engaged key strategic community partners to meet with the superintendent candidates of their respective districts, we believe it would be prudent on your part to do the same. And again, we respectfully ask for your consideration to provide our chamber leadership that opportunity as well. Finally, given my long history in this community, and in turn, my professional civic and community involvement over that time, it's my observation that the strength of the Kansas City, Kansas School District has had a domino effect on the parochial school system in this community, as well as Kansas City, Kansas Community College and Donley College, in large part due to the strength and stability of the school board members and superintendents that have served the district. And we truly hope to see that continue in the years ahead under strong leadership of our next superintendent. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you this evening. Best of luck to the board in your search. Good evening, and God bless you all.
Thank you. Next, we have our board updates, bond updates. Dr. Kelly Mather, please.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
On your board docs this evening, you have the regular monthly update that I provide you. There's nothing really too new and exciting there. The exciting thing comes from the pictures, so I'm going to turn it over to Mark here in a minute. But I did want to let you know that the expenditures for the last month were $6.6 million. We have a total, GMPs that total over $79,513,000 with a running balance of about just over $132 million. So you can see that on your monthly report, the board docs, I just wanted to point that out. It's really the only change. I didn't put any highlights, because Mark's going to give us some highlights. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Stubele, and he can give us an update, because frankly, folks, things are moving hot and heavy in the summertime. No pun intended.
Yeah, right.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
It is, school's out, it is officially busy. We are engaged in a lot of schools. So let me go through quickly and just kind of give you an update on the projects. Arrowhead, most of the ductwork is installed there. We've been working in there for several months, and evenings we've shifted to working during the day. The HVAC units are set, power's being run. We've started remodeling for the new teaching spaces. The new flooring is being prepared, and new ceilings. So we're moving very quickly there. Sorry. Welburn is well underway. Footers are done. There's steel, that picture's a little old. We've got steel coming out of the ground. You're going to find Welburn and Gloria Willis, both are going to seem like they just fly, that they go up. And then we move inside, and it feels like we don't do anything. But right now, it feels like we're flying. So Welburn and Gloria Willis are both moving very quickly. Footings, foundations, they're in roughly the same stage of construction. So let's see if I can move forward here without going too far. So Gloria Willis, these pictures are a little further advanced. But they've probably got 25% of the steel, maybe 30% of the steel, set for that. Wyandotte High School, we're more than halfway done with Wyandotte, the plumbing renovation. That's a challenging project. We've turned over some of the restrooms. First thing we did the day out of school is turn the water off. So except the new bathrooms that have the new plumbing. So it's moving along well. Science labs are under construction. The Project Lead the Way room was downstairs near the old woodshop area. And we cut the wall open, and, oh, the daylight coming through there is just, it's going to be stunning when we're done. It's going to be beautiful. I mean, well, here's a picture. Ah, this mouse is hard to do, I'm sorry. This is the space, but we cut the wall, it's just, it's going to be beautiful. So. Claude Hike and Stony Point North are both roughly in the same stage for the new additions. We have moved in the buildings now. We're going to rework the ceilings and lighting and some flooring. At Stony Point, we're going to rework the nurses' office and make it a real nurses' office instead of a camper nurses' office. Claude Hike, they're both, we should be putting roofs on here. Claude Hike, we poured the concrete for the roof. We're waiting for that to cure, and then we'll actually put the roof on it. Stony Point, I believe, we're going to pour it next week. So pretty soon, we'll be in the dry. Stony Point, like I say, it's very similar stage with the blocking. J.C. Harmon, we've been working there for several weeks in the evenings. Now the crews have shifted to working during the day. The academy space, they've gotten a lot done, but we're also moving into the hallways now and taking down the ceilings and reworking those now that the students are out. So Washington, we should be completed with Washington, probably within the next two weeks. We had a little bit of a leak on some of the windows, and I didn't want to put brand-new drywall on a wall that was leaking, so I'm fixing that. But we should complete those three academy spaces within the next two weeks. Washington will be the school for summer school this year. So we're trying to get out of their hair. So some other projects that are going on, some other things we've done. This is kind of a fun picture here. This is a piece of steel for Gloria Willis, and we had the students and the staff sign it. And we did that for Welburn also. So that was a fun day. And I believe that piece goes in the gym. You won't be able to see it, it'll be tucked up above the ceiling, but they know their name is part of that building for as long as it survives. And there's some pretty interesting things written on that steel. It's pretty fun. But we did the same thing at Welburn. Obviously, the middle schoolers are understanding it a little bit more, but that was really fun. So. And then we have the groundbreaking at Grant. That was, well, it was warmer. We didn't freeze, number one. And it was a fun day, and I'm going to close with this picture. We let the kids get up in the little track. Is that picture worth the bond right there, just the smile? Isn't it, the kids were thrilled to get up in that little mini excavator. That was a fun day. So I know I went through really quick, and I didn't get into a lot of detail. I can go into as much detail on rebar and concrete as you want, but I'm just trying to give you highlights there. So any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Excellent work, Mr. Stubele. We appreciate all your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Lane reports as superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Board, we're ready for item A, and we ask that you accept as an informational item a report on the district's partnership with Prep KC, as submitted by Dr. Strickland.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
We've heard things said tonight, like work together to make it work, meaningful partnerships, collaboration. This sentiment of us coming together is critical. I think it's known that we all have to come together in order to make this work. And what you're about to hear is a partnership that has been long-term for us, and we've had the luxury to have them right next to us for quite a while, and they've helped us with a lot of things. This partnership actually gets to something else that we've talked about, or at least has been heard and mentioned tonight. This whole notion of workforce development and creating a pipeline that creates quality employees for our community, which actually will change the very fabric of our community. So with that said, I would like to invite Ms. Susan Wally to the podium, so she can talk about a partnership that we have had with Prep KC for quite some time now. She has some highlights that really illustrate how when two entities come together, they can do some good things for young people.
Well, thank you, school board, for the opportunity to bring a quick update on our longstanding partnership between the Kansas City, Kansas School District and the Partnership for Regional Educational Preparation, Prep KC. And thank you, Dr. Lane and Dr. Strickland, for the opportunity to put a quick update together. Some of you are veterans of the Prep KC partnership, and I know for some of you, it may be a relatively new set of information. So I'm going to hustle through kind of a quick overview. There's lots more to say, and if you'd like to follow up with me, I'd be happy to sit down and go into more detail. But our partnership, now 11 years old from the time Prep KC was founded, has been a wonderful partnership with the district. As you can see, the mission of Prep KC is to support urban school districts in the by-state Kansas City region in accomplishing the goals they have for their young people. And we know, as Dr. Strickland said, that school boards, school districts provide lots of resources and opportunity. But the opportunity to have community partners to make them go further and faster with their goals for their kids can be important. And so college and career preparation for the region's urban students is our general mission. Some of you probably have seen this quote. I see the "why" got cut off to the next line there. But this is something at Prep KC, I'm sure we share this with you, that the kids in urban school districts, like the Kansas City, Kansas District, have all the candlepower, all the possibilities that any kid in any part of our city has. But some of them have not had many opportunities to develop their aspirations, to believe in themselves, to understand that pathway forward, and to understand what the 21st century workforce looks like and what it expects of them, and where they'll be competing for the good jobs in our region. So one of our roles we play as a partner to our six urban school districts is helping identify the gaps in that information and closing those gaps so kids have more opportunity to get where they want to go in life. We are an intermediary, meaning we bring together resources. We have corporate, private, and family foundations that have for 11 years now been putting their resources together at Prep KC. Our job is to strategically deploy those resources to help our urban school districts go further and faster in their goals for their kids. And so it helps create a more collective impact. Many of our funders just say, for years and years, I've put dollars here and dollars there and dollars here in different little projects. But they really want to be part of something powerful for the urban kids as it relates to opportunities for children and young people. But also, they're looking for well-prepared employees. And now they're telling me they're looking for not only well-prepared, but they want more diversity in their workforce. And so here's a real opportunity for us to deliver well-prepared young people that can help create the diversity in the workforce in the Kansas City region that makes these companies better by virtue of more diversity, more thinking, broader ideas about how to do business. Here's a quick map. Some of you have seen this before, but this is the five-county by-state region with state line right down the middle. And these are the six districts that Prep KC works with. We work with the districts where the percentages of free and reduced lunch children are very high, where the percentage of English-language learners are high, students of color, first-generation collegegoers, high percentages of all of that. And I will say, as a former teacher and principal myself at the middle and high school level, the climb gets much steeper, the higher percentages of kids with gaps, these gaps. And that's why I think any school district can reach out and pull community partners in to help close those gaps. And Prep KC's been really proud to be one of those partners over the years. I just had an educator call me from the Shawnee Mission School District and say, "Our kids have a lot of gaps, and we have low-income kids in our community. And would you ever consider coming out and working in our community?" And I said, "Well, when you get to over 83% free and reduced lunch, why don't you call me back? Because that's probably at least double what many of our suburban communities are experiencing, even the ones with higher percentages of low-income kids." So in our partnership, we're working with 15 urban high schools, as well as the middle and elementary schools that feed up through. Because as you know, in your Diploma Plus design, it's a whole P-12 continuum that really helps close those gaps we're talking about for kids. I'm going to show you some data now, because about six years ago, Prep KC worked with KCK and several of our other partner districts to help pilot a thing called Career Academies. And that was cohorts of kids. At that time, cohorts of kids, they were demographically matched the rest of their high school. But they were kids that started at the beginning of 10th grade and 10, 11, 12th grade with Prep KC's partnership and other community partners. They really got to take a much deeper dive into a career area that they were excited about. And they were broad career areas, like health science and healthcare, the bioscience and animal health corridor jobs, business and finance, tech jobs, architecture and engineering. And we had these pilots around the region, working in our high schools. We then invited, after five years of these pilots and lots of lessons learned, we invited an independent statistician from Columbia University in New York to look at our data and tell us kind of what we could say for sure was the result of having Career Academies in our high school partnerships. One of the things they pointed out to us is across the country, urban kids with the same demographics as they are here in KCK graduate from high school at only about a 75% level, which is kind of heartbreaking in and of itself. The 456 kids that were in this study with Career Academies had 100% high school graduation. Many of them were KCK kids from some of the partnerships in the cohorts in the high schools around KCK. Take a look at the confirmed post-secondary going. This is another piece of data that was really powerful for us. And this is data we pulled from the National Student Database that looks at confirmed post-secondary enrollment. And across the country, kids that are first-generation collegegoers, low income, all of the gaps we're talking about, about 36% have a confirmed post-secondary enrollment. The kids that were in Career Academies in this pilot doubled that confirmed post-secondary enrollment to 74%, which is also very exciting. But finally, what was, I think, most confirming for us was all kids, all college students across the country, return for their sophomore year at about a 70% level. Our kids that were with bigger gaps when they started out were returning for their sophomore year, second year of college, at a 79% level. So that means the preparation they got in elementary, middle, and high school actually put them in a position to do even better than the average kid across the country. For us, that was a really powerful lesson, that Career Academies, building up to high school, but then very clearly engaging kids in their high school years around a career path can really change lives and can really change the trajectory that kids are on. So this is a busy slide, but I just wanted you to get a little history here, because I was actually involved when I was, my years at the Kaufman Foundation, I was involved in the First Things First work that you all did. When your board, you all as board members, looked at the data that was coming out of your district and said, "That is not good enough for our kids." And you launched First Things First and started to work on a number of issues that you wanted to make improvements on. You can fast-forward to 2005, when Prep KC was founded, and we began working with your district on these career pathways for kids across the region, but especially in KCK, because you all were forming your vision of how you wanted to transform not just cohorts of kids in your high school, but you wanted to transform the whole wall-to-wall experience for kids in your high schools. And that has brought us to the current time, 2017, '18 school year. Prep KC proudly supports the Diploma Plus movement. And I hope you know, as board members, you are leading the region. When I talk about what you guys are doing, that you have set these very aggressive goals for every kid in your high schools, not just a little group of kids that you're going to pull out and help along the path, but all of your kids. It's been, I know, heavy lifting. It will continue to be heavy lifting. But other urban school districts and some suburban school districts are watching you all on this very aggressive path that you've set for yourself, for all of your children. And Prep KC is a partner in helping support you and make you go further and faster on your goals for your kids. This is just a quick update. This is from last school year, because we're still collecting the data for this school year as we close out this school year. But this is just some numbers of the things that we've been able, in partnership with your teachers, your principals, your cabinet, your Diploma Plus team, to provide over 1,400 middle school students and over 1,100 high school students engaged in a range of college and career opportunities. These are things like career jumping, which is the event, speed dating for a career, that started in high school. We started several years ago with these events in high school. But then the middle school teachers said, "But our kids need to start thinking ahead for high school, and Diploma Plus, you know, suggests that you need to kind of know what you want to do by the time you get to high school." you get to high school." And we've even had some of your elementary schools now engage us in what are the developmentally appropriate opportunities for the youngsters, the little ones, to start learning about what's college and where are the careers, excuse me, and what am I good at and what am I interested in? And then we've also worked, we have now at Prep KC, as a regional organization, we have 190 companies that work with us, over 900 professionals that will come do career jumpings, customize work site visits, they're taking interns in some of their businesses and organizations. And so it's been really great to be part of the broader, community-wide Diploma Plus team and the aspirations you have for your kids. Here are just a number of things. I'll just point out a couple of them, but you see the one there on the right, Space Camp? Prep KC pitched an idea to Honeywell, the big federal installation that does a lot of federal defense production. We pitched an idea, they've been sending a teacher or a kid here and there every year out to Huntsville, Alabama, to the astronaut training center, and from around the country, they would send, you know, collectively, a lot of folks. And we said, "Could we send a cohort of our urban teachers to Space Camp? And could they go have the astronaut training and all the science and STEM work that you're going to do at astronaut camp?" And they said, "Well, we've never done that, but let us go to National and ask." And National said, "Hey, that's kind of an interesting idea," because Prep KC now is going to then work with those teachers that come back from Space Camp after this summer through the coming school year to help them bring those lessons alive. And we've got a lot of ideas, you know, right here in Kansas City, we've got a gentleman who was part of a, he's an astronaut, part of a shuttle crew. We've got ideas for how we help those teachers now bring some of those people into their classroom and bring some of those lessons alive. So there are 10, of the 24 teachers going to Space Camp, 10 are from the KCK school district. From, these are middle school math and science teachers. So they're from Arrowhead, let me get this right, Arrowhead, Argentine, and Central that'll be going. And we'll look forward to keeping you posted on how those teachers are bringing those lessons back. I could spend a lot of time here, but I'm going to go over there with student internships. We're really excited also this summer. We've been helping, over the years, helping you all develop internships, preferably paid internships for summer for your kids that are getting up to the junior, senior year, and really so great to put an internship on your resume and to have those real-life experiences in the workforce. One example is a new set of 10 youngsters, well, high school juniors and seniors, that will be at KU Med Center in six-week paid internships this summer, distributed across the various labs. And they will be, many of them in lab coats and working right alongside scientists, and this will be a great experience for them. A lot of these kids are interested in bioscience and are from your Bio Plus program. And this will really take them even further, I think, along the path of their science career. So many more things to say there, but we don't need to dwell there. I just want to give you some pictures here. Career jumping, like I said, speed dating, and these Ignite events where professionals come and do sort of hands-on work with kids. This is a radiologist from St. Luke's Hospital with a young man. He's showing him how you have to put the leaded vest on, you know, in the x-ray room. Here are guest speakers and teachers. This is down at the Sprint Accelerator, a Sprint executive talking to kids about the telecommunications industry. Work site visits and job shadows. This is a company up north, north of the river, called Holland 1916. Your fifth graders have been up to Holland 1916. We have worked closely with this company, and the CEO has said, "Next year, all of their work site visits are going to be through Prep KC, because we are what he calls the easy button. We do a lot of the logistics and make it easy for kids to go up and have these experiences." The professionals are talking to the kids about how they use math every day in the metals fabrication work that they do up in that plant. And then we do a number of other. I mentioned Space Camp. With our resources, we've helped share the cost with the district of dual enrollment classes so kids can get early college hours. We've got a new strategy called Industry Informed Instruction. We've got a new online tool called The Connector that I hope maybe sometime I can tell you more about. But here's The Connector, and this is an asset on a platform that's virtual. Teachers and kids can go in, there are already 4,700 works of what we call industry chats and virtual work site visits in this space, and they can go in and search for one that matches a lesson they're teaching. When kids, for example, if we just talked to a teacher who said, "My kids want to know what a chemical engineer does, and they want to see a chemical reaction," and I think these were fifth or sixth graders, and we had in the, we helped them find a chemical engineer, a young woman, who took them through her lab and showed them a sort of an explosive chemical reaction that the kids were all excited about. But these are going to be fun for teachers, because they can bring a lot of things to life in their classroom, and as I said, I'll look forward to telling you more. But there's more information on our website if you'd like to know more, or I'm happy to talk with you individually about ideas, as well as just tell you more about how we work together as partners. So thank you for this opportunity to talk with you, and I'm really excited about next school year, because I know we're going to do even more in our partnership.
Thank you.
Questions now, we have time.
Do you want to have questions? Yes.
Madam President, thank you very much, and congratulations, and we're the recipient of all the goodness. But you know, in your slide about, I guess, the first general question is, how many students are you serving in your five districts?
Well, in those five districts, K-12 are 63,000 kids. We have direct interaction with about 22,000, 23,000, but that's growing as more. For example, if a lot of teachers get on the Connector platform and start to use that platform, those numbers will be one way that they will grow.
And therefore, the next question is, how many KCK students are lucky enough to participate in your programs?
We are compiling that new, that information right now. At the end of every school year, we put a letter out to each district about how many of their kids and teachers receive Prep KC resources. And so I will make sure that as soon as that letter is ready, in June, you will receive that, and it'll be customized to the KCK district.
Great.
And we'll make sure we get that over to, you know...
The office.
The office. To Susan.
Doctor Nguyen, we usually compile some of that specific Prep KC data in the MOU related to Prep KC.
Right.
So you'll see a list of all the things that they do, and the number of students that are actually touched by those specific activities.
Now, here's the challenge. Is it possible, in your slide that has the arrows, 2005 to 2018, can you disaggregate that data just for KCK? It may take a while.
Yeah, disaggregate which measurement? Like how many kids?
How many kids? Two or three of your strongest, because you didn't have the Space Camp in 2005.
That's right. We didn't even envision Space Camp.
I understand. So based on probably more of things that contributed to graduation rate, things like that, can you do that?
You're absolutely right, and I would have to see if our database would be able, we'd be able to pull some of that out. One of the challenges will be, our first partnership with the KCK district, when we kind of joined arms, Gloria Willis, I think either George Bridenthal or Gloria Willis were board chairs at that time, we were really collectively working on high school graduation rates, because they weren't where they needed to be 11 years ago. And as your district and others have picked up speed now, we don't just want kids to just get a generic high school diploma, we want them to really have all these assets. And so it has, the measures have changed over the years, but we might be able to...
Just to see some, and I would say, progression.
Yeah.
And where were the pressure points that perhaps contributed to the growth?
Yeah.
And you, this may be a question for Dr. Strickland, so thank you.
Sure.
What, how do you close that loop of those experience at one of those sites and the classroom? You know, you said, the teachers, if they go on the Connector, they can get lesson plans, let's say that. How do you know that that is...
That they're connected.
Yeah. Not make sure, but encourage them to.
Actually, one of the things that the Diploma Plus team is doing right now is they are taking the lessons from the Connector, and they're working with our instructional coach group to make sure that it specifically connects to our model of instruction.
Okay.
The lessons that they see from the Connector. So a lot of the summer work that is going to be happening this summer is going to do some of that for our teachers. So when they connect to the Connector, they will see explicitly how that connects to the model of instruction. So that's one example of that. But when you see, what Prep KC also does is that they provide access to the professionals that will partner and work specifically with our instructors, and so that they have an opportunity to collaborate, and they know what they're going to learn on those experiences, and the teachers have an opportunity to plan on how they incorporate that back in the classroom to further that learning, or prepare them for that particular experience or that event that they're going to go on.
So thank you.
Well, you're welcome.
Did you think of something else you wanted to say?
Well, I just wanted to say that it's been interesting, because of what Dr. Strickland said, your instructional coaches kind of stepped up and said, "This is a tool that could really help us." And we're now telling other districts that that's a great strategy, work through your instructional coaches. And so it's another place where I think your team is kind of modeling how to move the dial forward for all of the kids.
Thank you.
Ma'am, I don't have a question, just a comment. I like the Connector deal, but could it show a little bit more diversity in terms of showing Asian people, because we do have that here, African, Hispanic, because kids need to see themselves. I mean, this is excellent, but just a little bit, if you're in an urban core, you want to see yourself, and that's important.
And this platform is national, so the 4,700 assets come from all over the country. For example, the state of Washington adopted a version of the Connector on the same platform for its entire state as a tool in its career work. Our job here at Prep KC in partnership with your district is to go out to our big and small companies in the region, and first of all, represent the places where the really good jobs are going to be, and really get kids aware of that and what you have to do to be prepared to compete for those jobs. But secondly, to ask our companies, to the extent they already have diversity in their workforce, to encourage those folks to get on the Connector and offer industry chats, for example. The other diversity that people look for a lot in engineering and other STEM careers is gender diversity. And so, you know, get women to talk, to girls about the things that they could possibly do, especially in the STEM areas. But I think you're on absolutely the right track, that we want, we want kids to see all kinds of people succeed, we want them to see themselves in some of those...
Yeah, including those with disabilities, so you don't leave anybody out, that there's some hope, I can do this, there's nothing stopping me, what I need to do.
One of our really cool factory tours of a big high-tech robotics factory, the factory manager is in a wheelchair, and he's wheeling us around the floor, talking high-tech and talking manufacturing, and nobody bats an eye about it. It's just the way, you know, the way he does his work. So, good point.
Thank you.
Excuse me, before you go, before you go, I've got one quick question for you. You know, I understand that the students are exposed to all kinds of things. Do you have any examples of individuals who have really benefited by going through this process and who have not only graduated from high school, but have engaged in the work community, in the working environment?
Is your question about kind of these robust career paths, how much do they affect someone's ability to become well-employed later, or is it more about the Connector and the experiences on the online platform?
Yes. Yeah, yes, I guess that pretty much sums it up. I just want, is there a connection between this and individuals who go out and secure meaningful employment?
I think that is maybe the $64,000 question. That's the big question. Right now, because kids are just maturing out of some of our early Career Academies, some of your Career Academies and some of these pilot groups, cohort groups, they're starting to, they're matriculating through college or through industry-recognized credentials or through other avenues to become well-employed. And we have a few examples of kids. We have a young lady from the Center School District who just got her first job at Children's Mercy Hospital. She was in the healthcare and health sciences. We've got sort of onesies and twosies, but what we're planning to do is start tracking kids to employment. And quite frankly, I'm seeking a grant to have the right database to be able to do that, because that would be what would really tell us that we're changing lives.
You're looking at...
And changing our community in the future. So it's a great question. We're seeking the opportunity to do that. Most school districts do not have either the capacity or access to what happens to a kid the minute they walk off the stage after they've graduated. They're just out there in the ecosystem somewhere, and we need to know, are our kids succeeding because of the education we provide?
Sure. Thank you.
My question is to Dr. Strickland, do we know how many schools that is impacted by this program? Or is that in your report, the number of schools?
Well...
Students are located in, or are there...
We work with all of the comprehensive high schools and all of our middle schools, and you heard her reference some of our elementary schools. So we can get you the specific numbers, but off the top of my head, all four of the comprehensive high schools, all of the middle schools, and I'm not sure exactly how many of the elementary schools yet, because that's kind of new to our program, but growing, and they're pushing, as this work grows, we're learning we have to push that down. But I think in the report that Dr. Nguyen is asking for, you'll get a sense of all the numbers and the actual specific locations that they work with.
Oh, great. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you. Dr. Lane?
Thank you very much. Ms. Wally, thank you for being here. Appreciate it very much. And feel free at any moment to leave or stay for the rest of the meeting. We appreciate you being here. Board, we're now ready for Item B, a report on another very key partnership for us. We ask that you accept an update on the Bulldog Clinic and approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding with the University of Kansas Medical Center, the University of Kansas Family Medicine Foundation, and communication opportunities as submitted by Ms. Clay and Ms. Stewart.
Good morning. Good morning. It's been a long day. Good evening, Board, Madam President, Dr. Lane. It's my pleasure to be before you, and I am really excited to share a couple partnerships with you this evening in relationship to our work. So it is my distinct pleasure to introduce Dr. Alan Greiner. I've been working with him for a number of years, and we're going to ask at the end of the, or the conclusion of the presentation, to approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding, but I'd like for him to give you the background and where we are with the Bulldog Clinic at Wyandotte High School. Also joining us this evening is Mary Stewart, the principal from Wyandotte High School.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you so much for allowing us to come and present. I think it's been a little over a year, maybe longer, since we've come and talked about the Bulldog Clinic initiative. Let me just tell you briefly about my background. I'm a family physician. I work at KU Med Center. I've been seeing patients here in the Kansas City/Kansas community for about 25 years now. I've worked with multiple safety net clinics in the community as well as at KU, and then I have served for 15 years now as a medical officer at the Health Department, the Wyandotte County Health Department. So this initiative does not go back that far. This initiative started about seven years ago. It was not our idea at KU. It was not even a physician-led, really, thing at first. It was phenomenal leadership from a principal, I think, and then some great community members. There was actually some pastors and local nonprofit folks who were heavily involved in conceiving of this, and then we all just ran into each other in 2011, and that led to conversations that then eventually led to the launch of the clinic, and then a number of sort of side pieces that we'll be telling you about tonight. We started out that first year, we actually spent about six or eight months doing a needs assessment, trying to figure out, how should we do this, and what's it going to look like? And that's what we did initially. And then we actually were going to start at both Wyandotte High School and Northwest Middle School in 2012, but had a lot of space issues at Northwest, which I understand are, things are changing quickly there these days, I understand, so that's great. But we've really focused on Wyandotte mostly, although I'll tell you about some other pieces that are there as well. And we primarily do a once-a-week, Wednesday morning, 9:00 to 12:00 a.m. clinic there at Wyandotte High School. And you'll see, in 2016, '17, we served a total of 568 of the kids at Wyandotte. We try to provide as holistic a set of primary care medical services as we can, although, again, we're only there once a week, so it's not as comprehensive as a traditional primary care clinic would be. So we do have some partnerships to get kids more care if they need it, but what we primarily are doing there are sports, physicals, acute care services... are doing there are sports, physicals, acute care services, mental health care services, there's prenatal care services now, as well as vaccination services that happen. So, that's kind of the scope. What the MOU describes is allowing those of us who are physicians that work there to operate as primary care physicians. So, one piece that we don't, we're not going to talk about a lot tonight, but we've also got essentially an on-call system where some of us that are part of the physician team from KU Med can be contacted by text message, email, phone call, and we've even done telemedicine services the past two years that are on-demand, so we can provide some services in the Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday timeframe if needed. Women's health, the prenatal care services are one of the newest pieces to this, one of the physicians also from KU Family Medicine has been providing one-on-one as well as group prenatal care services at both Wyandotte and J.C. Harmon High Schools. We're heavily collaborating with the Health Department so that the kids don't receive bills, don't have to pay for things like labs and ultrasounds, some of the things that can be a traditional problem in the prenatal care world, we think we've done a pretty good job of overcoming those, working closely with the Health Department. The mental health program wasn't there in the beginning either, and sort of evolved as time went on and the needs that we were seeing in kids. We've been successful in getting some grant funding to provide this in an environment where it's pretty darn hard to bill for services around mental health, the way we're able to do it with some of the clinical services. So, we provide individual therapy, we provide case management, group therapies, some other services. We've got some great community partners in that too, not just those of us from KU Family Medicine, we've got social, the School of Social Welfare out of Lawrence, as well as the psychology training program. We work with some community folks, including Wyandotte, who's sitting in the audience tonight as well, and their PACES program, which is a linkage to care service program they have. So, that's a mental health piece, and I guess that's it. In the handout, you'll see some more details in terms of numbers, breakdown on demographics, types of services provided, and those sorts of things. And then, I'm happy to answer any other questions or take comments or have more discussion.
I've got a quick question, why is it difficult to bill for mental health issues?
The biggest problem we've actually had with the mental health program, which surprised us at first, is when we identify a kid with a need, it can be very, very hard to interface with the parent and go through the consenting process. We decided early on that we needed an additional consenting process to jump in and start providing mental health services. It's tough, it is tough to get ahold of parents and go through that process and always successfully complete it. So, one of the reasons we've had a lot of group activities in that arena, where we have, for example, what we call a psychohealth education class, where we can take kids who the parents have consented to our primary care services to be provided, the parent we have yet obtained consent for mental health services, and then we can have to clap kids in a group setting and at least get them some education on mental health issues and the availability of services across the community, but we can't bill for that, because it's in a group sort of educational setting. And it's, but it's been pretty successful, because maybe a month or two will go by and we still haven't gotten that parent to consent, and we've even done some door-to-door knocking type stuff in some of these cases to try to accomplish that. But that gives us a bridge, and then during that period, you know, we just can't bill for things. And we also have, as I'm sure you all are aware, a lot of kids that don't have any insurance coverage of any kind that, you know, that are in the district, and we're not billing them for anything, whether it's the primary care services or the mental health services.
I'd just like to say thank you for what you're doing, I've heard of this program, and I've heard positive things about it, and I just wanted to say thank you.
Thank you.
Infant mortality rate is something that is so dear to my heart, so I really appreciate seeing the prenatal services and just the overall health of individuals, helping them to take care of themselves, think about taking care of the future legacy, it just really encourages me. And I appreciate you breaking it down by school, the percentages and everything, because that way we do see here that all high schools are being served and given an opportunity to take advantage of services, so thank you again.
On the issue of infant mortality, do you have any data, do you pay any special attention to it, since you also say you're with the Wyandotte County Health Department?
Yeah, so there actually is something called a fetal infant mortality review board, some of you may be familiar with it, that operates out of the Health Department, there's actually a program to try to work on that issue, because it is an issue that's been a long-term problem across the community. Our primary physician, Dr. Butler, who couldn't be here tonight, that's involved with the prenatal care work, she's involved with that committee, and I am as well, and we're trying to figure out, okay, what can we do? I think we know that serving this number of prenatal cases may not get us all the way there, so we know we need to keep doing this, and if we can, see it grow, and keep working with that review board, which, you know, which has something like 20 or 30 members as part of it, to try different things, because we've got to keep trying and try to make an impact on that issue.
And help me understand, are ultrasounds free, or the statement says they're provided at cost?
So, yeah, they're a reduced-cost service, that's a negotiated contract, the Health Department has negotiated that with a local service provider, I believe it's through Leavenworth Imaging, and so folks go there, and I can't remember the exact number, I could get it for you, but I think it's around $50 or something like that.
So, who pays that?
So, the family or the student is ultimately responsible for that cost. We do not have, that's one program where we have not successfully had grant money to cover things like those sorts of costs. And that's pretty consistent with the way obstetrics and prenatal care services are provided across the county by different safety nets. If a person doesn't have insurance, you can get a lot of services at the Health Department, you can also go to some of the safety net clinics, like Southwest Boulevard Family Care or Swope Health Services, and they are all in that same group working on finding ways to get things covered for cost, because it can be very expensive if you don't have insurance, just to get through that prenatal care, you know, things like your blood work labs that you need, and your ultrasounds, and all those doctor's visits, if a person decides to forego those, right, because of that cost, then we're getting into this issue of are they going to have a higher risk of infant mortality or other maternal fetal problems as they go along.
And one last question, a quick read, how many students are you serving?
So, I think we had the total number for this last year.
Where is it?
Yeah, of 568 at Wyandotte. That doesn't have the smaller, the much smaller group that served at Harmon, although I think that there's an OB page or prenatal care page in there that has that number.
What page is that?
Yeah, in the handout, it's 20-some, I think.
I found it.
Yeah, okay. Much smaller at Harmon, but I could describe more of the history of all this, but things have evolved and we've tried to kind of take our time, we've not tried to do things too quickly and create new services that in some way didn't lead to quick, you know, helpful benefit. But we're open to more things, and we've got a lot of partners that I think we could pull into the mix. For example, we've got, there's a whole nurse practitioner training program at KU Med, they've become a heavy partner in the last year and a half, so they're heavily involved. They would be a great, I think, candidate if we could figure out ways to expand to additional schools and provide additional services, I think they would jump all over that, and we could all work on that together, so.
Well, I'll tell Bob Page you're doing a good job.
Okay.
All right. Approve the contract.
Please.
Okay, now we need to approve the memorandum of understanding for renewal.
I move.
Motion been made in second to renew the memorandum of understanding. Any questions? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those disapproving, hearing none. So ordered, thank you so much.
Dr. Greiner, we always appreciate that you personally come make these reports, thank you for your work. Board, we're ready for Item C, and we ask that you accept a report on Thrive, Together, Helping Reduce Youth Violence Initiative, and approve the memorandum of understanding with the University of Kansas Medical Center and the Center for Community and Health Development as submitted by Mrs. Clay and Mrs. Stewart.
Good evening.
Good evening.
It's my pleasure again to be before you, and again, would like to thank Dr. Greiner for all of the work and partnerships and helping to make sure we're holistically addressing our issues with our students. So, this evening, it's my distinct pleasure to introduce Dr. Jamela Watson-Thompson, who literally just got off the plane, probably just 15 minutes ago. But Dr. Thompson is an associate professor in the Department of Applied Behavioral Science and the Associate Director for the Center for Community Health and Development at the University of Kansas. She's been with KU in this role since 2010, her research uses a community-based participatory approach to address community health and development issues, including adolescent, substance abuse, and youth and community violence. Dr. Watson-Thompson is particularly interested in addressing factors or determinants of health, including educational attainment and access to resources and support which may or lie many problems and contribute to disparities in health and well-being, particularly for the underrepresented groups. Dr. Watson-Thompson researches and promotes community collaboration as an approach to foster sustainable change and improvements in the community, and also is a resident in Wyandotte County, so welcome her this evening.
Thank you, yes. Thank you all, and I am glad that I made it timely, and I hope I don't look like what I've been through to get here. So, who are we? Thrive, Together Helping Reduce Youth Violence for Equity is a community collaborative initiative that is really focused on helping to prevent youth violence, but most importantly, helping to support opportunities for our youth to be able to succeed and thrive. And so, with that, who are we? We are collaborative partners, and they're not all quite coming up, but we're collaborative partners that include about 50 community-based organization and groups that have come together through Thrive, including law enforcement, the sheriff's office, assistant county administrator schools, and many other sectors, to really think about what we can do from our relative basis of influence to support change and improvement. And so, what we see here really is that we're supporting what we call a multi-sector approach, so we know that our young people, they go in many settings and many sectors and areas of our communities, so we want to have touch points in the many places that we can, including business, government, law enforcement, faith, community, community organizations, health organizations, higher ed, so Donnelly, KCKCC, as well as KU, have come together, social service organizations, to really think about what it is we can do collectively to address the problem of violence, but most importantly, to help our young people to prosper. What do we know? Well, according to the Center for Disease Control and Prevention in 2015, there are approximately 4,891 youth homicide-related deaths. We also know that for individuals, and when we talk about youth violence, we're talking about individuals between the ages of 10 to 24 years. What we do know is that's the number one cause of death for individuals between the ages of 15 to 24 that are African-American or black, and the second-leading cause of death for individuals that, who are Hispanic, Latino, for that same age group. We also know that locally, of our 47 homicides that we experienced unfortunately in 2016, approximately 30% of those included youth victims, and of those, about 93% were racial/ethnic minorities. And so, what we're really talking about is how do we begin to address the disparities, the differences, differences in the gap, both racial/ethnic, but also geographically, and some of my slides aren't coming up, but what you would generally see here, what you see in your packet, which I believe you do all have, is a map that shows the Wyandotte High School cluster area boundaries, which is basically from 70 to the river, from 635 to 670, and that's the focus area for this grant. Why? As you can see in the packet in which you do have, there is clustering of incidences of, the red is our youth homicide incidences or victims, and the yellow, that I believe you see, are adult victims. And we see particularly the clustering within the northeast area of both youth and adult victims, which means we have more young people that are being exposed to the adult victimizations, and more young people directly impacted in those areas. And so, what we want to be able to do with resources that we do have that I'll talk about, is to be able to have some impact over the three years that we are blessed to have some grant funding. And I promise, there were displays up here, but I'll show you that I know my stuff, so if you look at your packet, what you see in your packet, and hopefully you can follow along with me, is information based on risk factors from the Kansas Communities that Care Survey data. And what we know based upon research is that there are multiple problem behaviors that we want to be able to address and impact, from substance abuse to violence to depression and anxiety, and there's a couple others that you see up there as well. And we want to be able to impact it, what you see on your left are areas and risk factors at the level of the community, at the level of the family, at the level of the school, at the level of the individual. Where you see the stars, the asterisks, that represents particularly the four areas that through our Thrive initiative that we want to be able to support. At the community level, that would be neighborhood disorganization or a community organization, at the school level, that would be commitment to school, at the family level, that's family management problems, and at the individual level, that relate, I think you also see pro-social behaviors or relationships with peers. And so, what you're seeing there is, when you look across, there's places that you can get banged for your, bad analogy, but there are some areas in which we know that we stack up across risk factors. So, if we not only address violence for certain risk factors, but we can also move substance use, we can also move depression and anxiety, and some of the other problem behaviors that you see there on your display. So, what's this initiative of all about? Ultimately, what we're trying to do is impact, yes, violence, we want to improve outcomes as it relates to academics, but we also want to address those risk factors, what we know comes before what we oftentimes see as the problems. And then, we also want to bring together our partners so that we're supporting coordinated programs, policies, and practices. We want a stronger system, systems that can support our youth and our families. Why? Because our youth, they operate within family structures, within peer and friend environments, within the school, within the community, within the society. What we've oftentimes been doing is doing one risk factor at a time, and that has been insufficient to address the problem that is so complex. So, what we're trying to do collectively, it's not any one of us that can do it, but together, what we're trying to do is move our environment and these multiple factors at the same time, so that we can afford our youth the most positive opportunities and outcomes. So, what are some of the outcomes that we hope to be able to move specifically? It is a grant that we have received resources through Health and Human Services, Office of Minority Health, we have three years remaining of this grant opportunity, the first year has primarily been planning. But what you will see is that at the individual level, we want to decrease homicides as it relates to our youth and assaults, as well as related factors. At the community level, we want stronger neighborhood attachment and organization within our community, that our youth feel like they're part of our community and that they have safe and protected places that care. At the family level, we want to support families and better supporting their young people and having more pro-social peers that are engaged in positive behaviors. And at the academic level, for our cohort of young people, we want to help to support them in graduating on time and reduce, and continuing to reduce disciplinary actions, and having GAs, as well as we'll follow our cohort of youth, our youth that we're recruiting now that are in 11th grade, they'll be one year post-secondary education, so we hope high school or trade school, so we want to stay with them to ensure their success past high school as well. Then we have some societal level factors that I won't get into, but I'll loop back around. So, what is our approach? Well, you can tell there's a lot going on, you're right, which is why we need you and many others in the community to help and work with us. But at the neighborhood or the community level, we want to have impact, which is why we brought together the System Advisory Board of 50 Partners, Deputy Chief Garner and many others were very important with bringing individuals to the table, Dr. Lane, Ms. Humphries, and probably many of you probably had an invite at some point, and we hope that if you haven't, that you'll come to our table as well. But we also want to focus on youth violence prevention intervention programs. We know youth operate in many settings, so schools are a key one, but, and we're working with both Dr. Mitchell, Principal Stewart, Vice Principal Davis, and many others within their school systems, including students, to think about what is it we need to do in our school so that we can ensure that we're preventing against violence and determining and understanding how to mediate, resolve conflicts, and whatever the schools identify are appropriate within their levels. In the hospitals, we're also trying to, as Dr. Greiner mentioned, work with the Med Center, so that if one of our persons end up there, our youth, that due to a violent incident, that we don't just leave it there, that we're starting to start those wraparound services and supports, and at the level of the neighborhood through community-based crime prevention. What we all know is our young people need things to do. So, a lot of times, we think about how do we better coordinate through a menu, not one of us can do it, but how do we better coordinate a menu of support of out-of-school time activities? And the other part that we'll get to is for our focus group of 120 youth who we're currently recruiting, we have about 180 youth that have signed up, and now we're actively recruiting them to get them plugged into the program and their families as well. But of that, we're wanting to support education, college, and career readiness, so we have college prep supports, which I won't get into, college savings accounts, employment prep and placement opportunities with a menu of partners, so Historic Northeast Midtown Association would be one of those, Kansas Workforce Partnerships, so we don't do any of this alone, we try to bring it together and kind of bridge and then foster. STEAM training through KCKCC on this summer, as well as KC United for some of our young people. That brings us to what you see in the middle, community-based program electives. What we know are some of the skills that our young people need are life skills, social skills, communication skills, conflict mediation, decision-making skills, and yes, the school have a part to play, but you don't have a part to play in that alone. We, as the community, want to help you in that endeavor, and so with that, thinking about how do we have kind of almost electives, right, thinking about almost Wednesday early release time that youth can plug into and say, Thinking about almost when's the early release time that youth can plug into and say, hey, our parents do, let us help you help your young person. And then also, we know the parent and the family is a core component. So once again, working with the menu of partners, K-State Extension, Heartland 180, and many others that are doing programs like Strengthening Families, and trying to plug in our 120 parents and families into that to strengthen the family bond. We're developing playbooks. We want our young people to be ready, have checklists, know where they're going, begin to see their future selves in the present, and so working with plans that their families, as well as us, are wrapping around to help them to support so that they start to see their future in the present. And so with that, we have some milestones I'm not going to get into, but where we are right now, I already noted that we're actively recruiting. We hope to launch July, nope, June 11th. With that, with our summer programming, and then it's year-round supports from there, so it doesn't stop there. We want to integrate it to the school year as well with what we hopefully will be able to do to the schools. And so with that, I'm going to give it to Dr. Mitchell and Principal Stewart to maybe add on from their perspective.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
I would just like to speak, and I brought with me Ms. Portley from Northwest Middle School, who's going to be helping coordinate the effort in our school, but I just wanted to point out, we are excited about Project Thrive, and there's a need certainly in our school demographic. I just wanted to point out, we did a survey with our students in the auditorium where we asked each of them, how many of them have been affected by violence, you know, someone that they knew, someone in their family. 100% of them raised their hands, you know, with the neighborhoods that they live in and various things that they deal with. But then we went deeper and asked how many of them have been affected by a tragic situation like a homicide directly connected to their family, not just what they saw on the news directly connected to their family. And I was amazed that probably about 85% of them raised their hand. And so one thing that we would like to partner with this with Project Thrive is to help our students to make positive choices, to help them understand, and I think this program will do this, that violence is not always the answer. And we deal with that in the school day, you know, with young people who feel like conflict is the way that you resolve situations and resolve issues, and it's a reality in our schools. And so we are excited for Project Thrive to help our students make healthy choices and work with our families, and especially bringing in all the community partnerships that will help with this, with this program. So that's all I wanted to share. Do you have anything to share? All right. Any questions that you all might have of me?
Thank you so much for the demographics and area relating to violence, especially homicides. We know that a wraparound approach is the best way because if you're in that home and that mother is getting, or father, is getting domestic violence occurring, then we know that has an impact on the school. So thank you for saying there is some wraparound approach to where we're getting possibly the family help or counseling or something so that, that what they're learning in the schools can also help the families find the resources or safe houses so they can go to where they need to be safe.
Yes, correct.
Another thing that Project Thrive will do also is help our families and students deal with trauma. You know, we have so many students that are dealing with various forms of trauma, and so Project Thrive will directly help that as well.
I had a, I'm sorry, I had a question. I know you're doing middle school, high school, but what about your elementary schools that feed in? And I know you can't do everything, but, but in the future, a year or two, is that what you're working toward to pull that elementary feeder school or the two or whatever into the middle school?
Yeah. So we definitely know early prevention would be the best. To be quite frank, the funder really wants us to focus on the age range and the populations that we have, but our hope and prayer, quite frankly, is that if we can demonstrate effectiveness in this, that hopefully we're supporting and building an approach that then, you know, pass any one grant or funding source that we'll be able to support and to expand and we can look at going into earlier primary prevention. So thank you though, but you're right.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Tonight's been an interesting night because it's kind of talked about the journey of all of this. When Dr. Wally talked about in 1998, when she started with First Things First, you know, I remember back about 20 years ago, when we started with really getting to know our students better and the small learning community approach, one of the things we learned right off the bat was that our students were real good at hiding a lot of things that they were dealing with. And as we started building those relationships with our students, I can remember as clear as it was yesterday, the teachers that would come to me and say, oh, my gosh, what are we going to do? We weren't trained to be able to work with some of these issues with our students. So we knew, and it's great to have Mr. Thompson here because he was leading the charge about that time as well, but it was, it was, we knew at that point that we needed that wraparound service for our students, and that it wasn't just about their academic success that we had to pay attention to, but their social, emotional well-being, their healthiness. So as Dr. Greiner came up and started talking about the Bulldog, the Bulldog came about because we knew our students, they weren't getting their immunizations. They, they did not have a medical home. Many of them didn't. They didn't have vision care. They couldn't even see the chalkboard in the classroom at that time. And so coming together to say, what are we going to do? And it was wonderful at that time because we had the Health Career Small Learning Community. And so we could implement the work of the Bulldog by providing services to our students, but also providing some real career preparation for students interested in the health area so that they work in the Bulldog, arm-in-arm with doctors and with medical students to understand what is it like to work in a clinic. So that's a real positive advantage. Well, when the opportunity came then, and I call it a spinoff of the Bulldog, Thrive came about because over the last couple of years, we've really developed the growth around that need for mental health services. And I have said over and over, it has really saved some of our students' lives when they were in crisis, to be able to have those mental health supports right there in the school, where we could get Dr. Greiner on the phone or a mental health professional on the phone, or we have a mental health professional right there in the building at that time, that we're not sending them somewhere else to get services where they may not get to, but they're right there in the halls. And it's also taken that stigma away from the idea that I need some help with my mental health. It's now just what we do. In fact, we don't really even call it mental health. We call it just going to the Bulldog. So it's, do you have your Bulldog services? Have you had your Bulldog time? And it's just what the students do because they know that's what it means to be, to live health, a healthy lifestyle. Again, it's the wraparound services we have. So now, those mental health services need to also help us address the trauma that our students are dealing with. But we're doing it now, not with our Health Careers Academy, but with our Human and Public Service Academy, which is another one of our career academies at Yandotte. And that's why Ms. Davis is here. She is the principal of the HPS or the Human Public Service Academy, and she will be leading this charge, very similar to the model that we used back in 2011 when we started our work with the Bulldog. But now we're trying to develop a Violence Prevention Center at Yandotte through the HPS Academy. Because human public service is about developing a safe community for our students to be able to thrive and grow and reach their aspirations. And so now, we're going to take this next school year we'll be coming about, and with the help of Thrive, the students will be actually working with professionals to design, what does that look like at Yandotte? Just like we said eight years ago, seven years ago, what does a health clinic look like at Yandotte? We're saying, what does a Violence Prevention Center look like? How do we, like, engage in education about anger management? How do we engage in education about how I deal with the crisis in my family, when I know I want to go to college, I know I want to move forward in my life, but some of my life situations are not really going to let me do that? So how do I still move forward? So we're very excited about this idea that the wraparound services we know are needed. We're not sorting and separating our students so that it's the ones who decide they can make it that are the ones who are going to graduate ready, but that all of our students have that opportunity to graduate ready. So the partnership that we had with the Bulldog, we started back in 2011, is now that with the same optimism, we're creating this partnership with the idea that we're responsive to the needs of every one of our students. Again, not sorting and separating and saying, good luck, I hope it works, but that we get to know every one of our students and figure out what their needs are, both academically, but also socially, emotionally, and with a healthy lifestyle, so that they can go after their goals and their dreams and be successful moving forward. And we have a safe community, not just during the school day, which is important, but also after they leave us. So wrapping them around 24 hours a day, and not just during the school year, but through the summer and around with mentoring throughout the year. So we're very excited about the opportunity, what's to come. We, we're really excited. We think five, six years down the road, we're going to be talking about how this has spun off to something else. We have, we'd have the new Violence Prevention Center with HPS, we'll have the Bulldog, and we'll be trying to figure out what's the next piece that we need to put in place that our students need so that they can move forward in their lives. So thank you. And any questions for you?
Yeah. Will you offer some sort of training for your teachers?
Definitely.
So they're aware what the kids are getting, because too often, I've heard teachers say, we're dealing with all this trauma, and we don't know how to really deal with it.
Exactly.
We can do so much, but we haven't had the proper training. Will you offer that?
Definitely. That's a huge piece of the work as well, is not just supporting students, but also supporting our staff, because they're with the students every single day in their classroom, and knowing how to even identify some of the issues. Identifying those risk factors or different tendencies with our students is critical. You know, you're a teacher, you know that what that is in your classroom. The student isn't acting out just to be defiant. There might be something else that we need to be responsive to their needs.
Thank you.
Dr. Thompson, I wanted to thank you. I've been with you from the beginning, and you've worked very hard to bring all the partners together, not trying to reinvent the wheel, but to have everyone working together. And you've come a long way, and it's very exciting to have been working with you.
Well, it's exciting. We definitely feel blessed. One thing I just want to leave you with then is that to further strengthen our partnership with the school more formally, we are asking for the MOU, as you know, but that will help us to ensure that we can solidify our year-round supports, as well as broker our resources that we want to offer from what we're bringing, but also with the school and community resources as well, that we can use your facilities and some of the things as resources. I did come to the listening session that was held at Wyandotte High School, and I think this is a wonderful opportunity to begin to address, not everything, but maybe a few things that we heard from there. A data sharing agreement's pretty key, so some of those data that we saw was from, well, you may not have saw, but that was in your packet, was from the Kansas Communities That Care Survey, and that's a survey that's administered directly through your school. And so we're hopeful that we can begin to access those data and use it to help to inform a little bit what we're doing, as well as some of our records that we'll need for the cohort of our youth. When it's all said and done, we do hope we're bringing, building something that's sustainable, that, you know, years from now, we would have built the foundation, and so I thank you for that. I do have some colleagues that are here, and so thank you all as well. And Lisa, I will give it back to you, or to whoever. Any other questions?
Well, Dr. Thompson, I like to not date myself.
Okay.
But what was it, both of us? Was it 25 years ago that we were working together on community asset?
I don't like, let me take my glasses off, I don't like that. But no, it hasn't, it has been probably about 20 years.
No, it is more than 20 years. So good to see you again.
You too, Sam.
You haven't aged a bit, nor have I. But that first, I mean you for continuing to work in our community. It's still, we were together when you were, were you a graduate student?
Correct, in grad school.
In the Community and Health Department. And are you able to, I guess you're seeing some of the same issues that we identified 25 years ago. Maybe they have, they changed a little, I don't know, but you, but you're there. But we, we've been waiting to hear from you. It was in the Call, I think, newspaper, big spread about the program, and we didn't know. So glad to see you and glad to know, and it's a four-year grant?
Correct. And so we have about three years remaining. The first year's been pretty developmental.
And it, it's $4 million?
Oh, I wish. It's $425,000, but over, over a few years, it's about one and a quarter. We'll take that.
Oh, okay. Well, we're going to.
We'll claim the $4 million.
Right. But, but thank you for continuing to work in the community, and it's been a good 25 years.
Well, thank you.
All right.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding.
I move.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any had questions? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those disapproving, hearing none, the motion carries so already. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Thompson. We appreciate your efforts to be here tonight.
Thank you.
Board, we're ready now for item D, and we ask that you approve a contract for services with Children's Mercy West Clinic for our Parents as Teachers Program, as submitted by Mrs. Clay and Ms. Hempel. The night of partnerships.
Right. Good evening. This is a partnership, a new one, that we've modeled after one we've had for over 10 years with University of Kansas Pediatric Clinic. We've had a parent educator down there that she works with young children during well-child checks and doing developmental screenings and social-emotional screenings, and she takes it further than the doctor and works with the families on. If there is a developmental concern, do they understand the concern? What can we do to help that child reach the milestone they need to? Or maybe it's a feeding issue, sleep issue, just varies, just general parenting issues. And so she's there to follow children, re-screen, do a lot of that developmental work, that the physicians are more focused on the medical part, so she's focused on the developmental. So I was approached by a physician with the Children's Mercy West Clinic last fall to see if we could develop the same type of partnership there, and they're really excited about it. They would put in about 55% of the cost, and the rest of the cost would come from our Parents as Teachers state grant. So it's, and it's contingent on that. We haven't heard yet how much funding we're going to get, but hopefully we'll hear in the next couple of weeks. But it's not of any cost to the general fund from the school district at all. It's just Parents as Teachers state grant and Children's Mercy West, their funding. So it really creates a unique partnership between the physician and the family and the parent educator. They can really connect, they can provide home visiting services if the family's willing. They may not have time to do that, but at least they can connect at the clinic, the parent educator will follow up with that child. I'll give you a couple of examples of what this, things have happened at KU. An 18-month-old had a concern on developmental screening, so the parent educator met with them and asked the parent, can your child point to pictures in a book? And the parent said, we don't read. So that gave the parent educator a chance to model reading to a child that age. And the child then came over closer to the book, and the parent said, he's never done that before. So the parent could see the importance and the benefits of reading. Then the parent educator could also address with the parent that the child wasn't talking. Parent didn't have a concern about that, that, oh, they're young. Well, then the parent educator could talk to him about what was expected with developmental milestones at that age, and then they, you know, refer them to Parents as Teachers, re-screen the child in about three months. So they make a lot of connections. You know, when you go for a well-child check, it's always pretty rushed, and doctors only have so much time to address development. Another 18-month-old came in, and again, their developmental screening showed a delay. This child wasn't talking. But in working with the parent, the parent educators thought, well, this parent talks a lot to their child, they read a lot, you know, what could be going on here? And they noticed in conversation, the child had an eye that was wandering, so they went and did a functional vision screen and found out the child had astigmatism. If the parent, if the child can't see their parent's face when they're talking to them, they can't imitate the sounds to learn how to talk, so, and then they were able to get the child into services. So it's just that extra step, that extra piece to make that partnership work. This physician would still carry a caseload for home visits with Parents as Teachers, so, and they'd be overseen by our program. They'd make a ton of referrals to Special Ed, the Infant-Toddler Services at KU, KU Med, through the pediatric partnership there, and that would be the same with Children's Mercy. So our Infant-Toddler Services, it does speech, OT, PT, things like that for birth-to-three-year-olds, they make referrals there, and as well to Part B services. So, any questions?
Will this expand then the number of clients they will have?
That, who would have? That Infant Toddler, Parents as Teachers? Probably, because they would be making more referrals to our program as well, so.
So, will you have to align the reporting or you can keep it separate? I mean, you know what issue we're talking about?
Right.
Funds and how you account for them?
We, right now, because we've had this with KU, the funds just go in to our general Parents as Teachers Fund, but it pays for that position.
Right. But you know the reporting alignment and all that stuff?
Do you mean with reporting on family statistic, child statistic?
Right.
It all goes into one report, so.
Conversation we've had before. So, we have to still do that type of reporting or can it stand alone as a program?
It can do either. I mean, we can pull a report just, we can pull a report by parent educator or it'll also go into our whole program report.
I mean, just what does K S D require? Or will they require? Don't know yet.
They, for this, they just have, as long as we've got the matching funding, it's no problem, so. And we'd have the funding from Children's Mercy, so.
Good. Congratulations.
Thanks.
Other questions? Excuse me, I'll take a motion to approve the contract.
I move.
I'm sorry?
We move.
Okay.
And we second.
All right. Motion been made in second to approve the contract. Parents as Teachers support. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, the motion carries so order. Thank you.
Thank you very much, board. We're now ready for item E and we ask that you approve the renewal of the memorandum of understanding with Paces Incorporated for Services for the 18-19 school year as submitted by Dr. Mather, Octavia Australia, and Ms. Stewart. And welcome to Long-Term Friend, Randy Callstrom. Thanks for being here.
Good evening, board.
Good evening.
Dr. Lane. I'm happy to be here before you this, this evening to present for you and for your consideration our annual renewal with Paces, Inc. And I'm, I'm gonna hand it over here to Randy Callstrom, the executive director for Wyandotte Inc., to provide you an overview of the MOU. But as many of you know, Paces, Inc. is, been a critical partnership for our school district for many years and they provide social and behavioral emotional support for students and families in Wyandotte County.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and share with you a little bit of information about Paces and the work that we do with the USD 500. This partnership goes back more than a couple decades, I believe, a long time, to one extent or another. And if you're not familiar with Paces, it is the children's arm of the Community Mental Health Center, Wyandotte, Inc. And we've been around the county since 1953 as an organization and the designated Community Mental Health Center by Wyandotte County since 1963. There are a variety of aspects to this MOU. One is simply the information and sharing information that we share together. It's a lot of shares. But we also are the behavioral health consultants, so this gives us the opportunity as the mental health center to work with teachers, with schools, with faculty and administrators on a consultant basis. As part of that, we also do training with the faculty and with the schools, including trauma-informed care training. And then, the Wyandotte Academy is a specialized partnership program that we have with the USD 500 and with the Bridges Program. I believe this was the conclusion of our 18th year of the Wyandotte Academy. If my math is right, I might be off a year or so. But it is a specialized partnership program targeting those students who are most severely afflicted by a severe emotional disorder. So, these are not children who have simple behavior problems, not that behavioral problems are simple, but these are children who need a very special therapeutic milieu to be successful in school. So, these are children who have more severe mental health diagnosis. We provide therapists, a supervisor, case managers, and attendant care workers that work hand-in-hand with the Bridges staff, providing the mental health supports and crisis intervention throughout the school day. Then we also have a school-based therapist partnership. This is our, I believe, our third year, fourth year of that partnership. The school district does provide a little over $44,000 for one therapist. We provide the salary and the benefits for two additional school-based therapists. The idea behind this is to really break down barriers to accessing mental health treatment. As Dr. Grinder mentioned earlier, it is sometimes challenging to engage parents to give that consent for treatment, but that is necessary by law to have that consent for treatment in order to provide that care. This last year, in our school-based mental health program, we received over 250 referrals from seven schools and over 80 students began receiving mental health treatment. About another third of those 250 referrals, we were not able to reach. And the way that works, we receive the referral and then we outreach the families to try and engage them and try and get their consent to provide the mental health treatment to the student. We also work with the family in the home, as well as the student in the school in that And then this year, the legislature in Topeka has funded a pilot program, a partnership with six school districts and six community mental health centers, three urban and three rural. The Kansas City, Kansas School District was one of the school districts chosen. The school district will receive money through the Department of Education for 11 school mental health liaisons that will act as a kind of a go-between, between the student, the school, the administration, the mental health center, and the families. One of the things I'm very hopeful in this pilot is that the liaisons, which will be school employees, will help bridge that gap that we have in engaging families around services for their child. It really is about building trust. There's lots of reasons not to trust us who want to help, even though our intentions are good. And sometimes that takes time. Sometimes that takes repeated efforts to engage and build that relationship. So, I'm very hopeful for that piece. The mental health center, Paces, will receive funding for two therapists and two school-based case managers. It's equivalent of 20% of their salary. And basically, that is intended to help provide the financial coverage for those students who do not have a pay source, so that regardless of ability to pay, we will serve everybody who is referred to us. And at this time, I would take any questions.
Thank you. And thank you for your, your work. Just a generic question. The MOU, what is the, it says 500 will provide $74,800 to Paces for services. And then, what, just generically, what does the school liaison do? What does the clinical therapist do? What does the case manager do?
Sure, sure.
And answer that.
Yes. Absolutely. So, the $74,000 is money allocated by the legislature in Topeka. That money is passed through the school district.
Oh, okay.
And that's the money to help fund 20% of the salary of our two therapists and two case managers, so that it helps cover for the uninsured. The rest of our salary and compensation will be derived from billing for those services to Medicaid or third-party insurance. So, that's where that $74,000 comes from. It was decided to pass that money through the department ed and then through the school districts for purpose of the pilot. In, in a very simplified way.
Right.
The school liaison, and Octavia may help answer this too, so chime in. But the school liaison will help identify students who are in need of help, that the school is worried about, whether that's the teacher, the administrator, and get to know the students and help identify. You know, one of the things that is easy to identify are those students who act out, that might need help because they're disrupting the classroom, they're disrupting the school. What we don't often identify are those students who we refer to as acting in. Those are the students who are withdrawn and isolated, but who may be suffering extreme trauma, depression, et cetera. And so, it's, the liaisons will help identify the students, engage the families in the referral process, work with Paces staff to help make that bridge. And hopefully, it'll help increase the number of students that get the help that they need. Our therapists will work closely with the liaison and the schools that are part of the pilot. They'll also provide the individual and family therapy. And so, the services will be provided onsite at the school, but they'll also, again, be able to work with the family, providing family therapy if that's appropriate and desired, as well as working with the student one-on-one in school or out of school. The case managers do a couple different things. One, they're, that coordination of care. So, they're working with referrals to other resources. If they needed a referral to a psychiatrist, the case manager will help coordinate that care. They're, be the ones working with any other professionals that are involved in, again, that coordination of care. They also do a lot of one-on-one skill building, social skill building, problem-solving, and crisis intervention. And the idea is to provide that service when and where and when the student is needing the help, so that they're learning the skills in real time, in the real setting where they're needing the most help. So, that's kind of a general breakdown, if that's helpful?
Yes, very. Thank you. And what's the minimum, not the minimum, what credentials must the liaison and the case manager have?
The liaison has to be a master's-level licensed mental health professional. Our therapists are also qualified mental health professionals licensed at a minimum of the, at a master's degree by the Behavioral Science Board. And then, a case manager requirement is a bachelor's degree or equivalent of education and related work experience. And those are Medicaid requirements.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
I got a question for you. Do you, what kind of input do you have in the development of IEPs?
Just in general?
Yes.
You know, our staff are involved in the IEP process if someone is a client of Paces. So, if we're invited, we'll, we will be at the IEP meeting, which I think is really important because, you know, as one of our parents said a long time ago, our case managers are the, oftentimes, the only adults that see the student or our client individually, in group settings, in the school setting, in the home setting, with their friends and in the community. So, giving that very cross-sectional perspective into the IEP process, I think, is really important. Also, as our behavioral consultant role, we could be asked upon for a student who's not our client, just for general feedback of if behavioral health services might be helpful, or the kind of behavioral health services that might be helpful to that student.
Thank you.
For the new liaisons that will be hired on, is there a strategy to encompass all schools or are there certain targeted schools? Or what is the plan or outline for that?
So, as I answer that question, I do want to add a clarification. You know, the, the MOU says that Paces will provide those school liaisons. Those are actually, will be persons hired by the school district. These will be district employees. And there will be 11 of them allocated to 10 pilot schools.
10 pilot schools?
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, I'll ask for approval of the contract, the renewal of memorandum of understanding.
I move. Second.
Motion been made in second to approve the memorandum of understanding. All those in favor?
Aye.
Excuse me. Those opposing, hearing none, so order.
And thank you very much. It's our pleasure.
Thank you.
Board, we're now ready for item F and we ask that you accept a report from the middle school naming committee and approve the name for the new school as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Good evening.
Good evening. We're gonna shift gears slightly and we're gonna talk a little bit about some bond projects. As you know, one of many of the projects that's been referred to even this evening is the construction of a new Northwest Middle School. As part of the construction of the new Northwest Middle School and part of the Board of Education's naming of facilities policy, we put together a naming committee and we'll bring recommendations to you this evening regarding the results of that. On the naming committee, there were 16 committee members, so a large group of folks. Do we have our committee members here? I just have to say, stand up. Got someone in here. Now, I want you to know, all 16 said they were coming.
Yeah, they said.
But they all said they were coming.
Well, we got six of them.
But it's the day after the holiday, so that may be it. But thank you all and we'll be calling on you shortly. But there were 16 committee members. Just as a quick breakdown, there were three district staff members, two of our respective board members participated, Dr. Yeager and Ms. Jones. We had four community members, four school staff, Northwest school staff members, and three parents. So, really, a really good group of folks represented the entire school and the community. And I gotta tell you, the dialogue was excellent and very intentional and purposeful in trying to determine recommendations to bring before you this evening. So, they named, they brainstormed a number of iterations of names for Northwest Middle School, the new building. Came up with five, six, seven options, but after, as I said, a lot of dialogue, a lot of intense conversation, healthy conversation and positive conversation, they vetted out through all those names and ended up with two selections to put on the survey. The two selections were Carl B. Bruce Middle School and Northwest Middle School. We put the survey out, as we did in the former naming committee for the elementary school. Survey had about 1,344 responses from parents, committee members, staff, and students. And the results of the survey you have with you in your board docs. It was 50, 50.1% to remain Northwest Middle School and 46.6% to be Carl B. Bruce Middle School. So, as a result of this survey and recognizing that it was extremely close with all of the votes coming in, actually about 50 votes different, the naming committee decided to forward both names to the Board of Education, recognizing and acknowledging that ultimately it's your final decision on what the school's gonna be named. But as you can see in the survey results, the majority of the folks in the survey wanted to keep the name Northwest the same, at 674 votes, followed by Carl B. Bruce, which was 627 votes. The naming committee also wanted me to indicate that a number of the naming committee members also wanted to keep Northwest named the same, Northwest Middle School. But again, the dialogue was so good between both and there was folks that valued both names on the committee. The committee decided to keep the colors of the school, gold and black the same, and the mascot, which is the tiger, the same, so that they can acknowledge and support the history of the current Northwest Middle School, despite the results of the name this evening that the board selects. But this evening, we've got two folks that are willing to come before the board and share a little bit about their perspective of why Northwest Middle School name was important to maintain, and also why Carl B. Bruce, that name, was important to the committee and forwarded onto the survey. They recognize both of them, that's not their job to really persuade you one way or the other. We've talked about that in the committee meeting. It's really their job just to inform you of what that conversation was, since all of you could not be there and participate. So, I believe we have Reverend Lamb, who's gonna speak on behalf of the Carl B. Bruce name, and I believe Cameron Smith, Mr. Smith, are you gonna speak on Northwest? You could both approach the podium. Do you want to go first? I told them they have like two minutes, or as long as they need.
Don't tell a Baptist preacher that.
Yeah, that's a pastor, okay? Come on now.
I get three closers, right? To Dr. Cindy Lane and the school board of Kansas City, Kansas, it is with great humility and honor that I stand before you to speak on behalf of one of, what I consider one of God's greatest gifts to the Kansas City, Kansas USD 500 Public School District, Mr. Carl Bruce. Mr. Bruce's name has been considered as one of the finalists for name consideration for the new construction of Northwest Middle School. One of the reasons why I believe, or several reasons why I believe that Mr. Bruce's name has made it to the finals is because Mr. Bruce is a household name that is held in great honor because of his life, love, and legacy that he has left at Northwest Middle School. And because I'm a graduate of Wyandotte High School, I can't say the other school that he went to. Let go. But Mr. Bruce, he, for some of us that didn't have fathers, he fathered us, he disciplined us, he directed us, and he redirected us. Mr. Bruce was my principal, he was also my mother's principal. Mr. Bruce has touched thousands of lives. He saw no race, creed, or culture. He saw people. This man is forever stamped on the hearts of thousands across our country. I believe along with countless others, that's why. I believe along with countless others, that's why his name has made it to the final list of possible names for renaming the school of the new Northwest Middle School. And so I want to thank you for this opportunity, and that's the reason why I believe that Mr. Bruce has made it to this final list.
It really means a lot to stand before you all tonight. 13 years, K through 12, as a student in KCK, and now 11 years as a staff member of KCK. First off, I definitely want to honor Carl Bruce and his legacy. Amazing man, from what I've read about and heard about, and what he accomplished at Northwest Middle School. Northwest Middle School was established in 1923. Didn't take 'em long to start creating history, as their first basketball team made it to the state qualifiers. Their Northwest newspaper, The Norwester, was actually selected as the top newspaper in the state of Kansas, and also received national recognition. Now, that's history. But in the last 10 years of our current principal, Dr. Mitchell's tenure over Northwest, we've done some pretty good things ourselves. We have a current online newspaper blog that is over 81,000 views. We have a YouTube channel, we have several undefeated football seasons, basketball seasons, wrestling seasons, sports. And we've accomplished a lot. When, I remember when Dr. Mitchell first got to the school, we were at about 200, maybe eight to 220 students. And there were fights almost every day, there was tagging of the schools, there was a lot of things going on that I believe Northwest was at the, it was really close to getting closed down. A couple of years ago, we went from 208 all the way up to 750. We've seen amazing gains, and we got to hang a banner a few years ago for achievement in academics. I am a Northwest teacher, I've been there now for 10 years. I'm also the football coach, one of the wrestling coaches, and serving several capacities at Northwest. I'm very proud of the legacy that we've created at Northwest. And in 2023, we will be on our way to celebrating 100 years of Northwest Middle School. Of course, we're gonna have a new building that's gonna open in 2020. So in 2023, will we be celebrating 100 years of Northwest, or three years of Carl Bruce? I definitely appreciate being here and respect each and every one of you all. Again, KCK student, this was amazing to talk to you all.
I think, well, you can see the challenge and the passion, and thank you both so much for being here this evening and speaking. And again, thank you to the committee members, everybody's here. They certainly gave of their time, and we met on several occasions and had just some excellent dialogue and conversation. But as we have done in the past with the most recent naming of the new elementary school, we are forwarding both names to the board for your final decision and recommendation on the name. So with that, I will turn it over to the board for a vote this evening on either Northwest Middle School or Carl B. Bruce Middle School.
Okay.
I make a motion that we keep the name Northwest Middle School and honor the survey results. The community voted, and that's one thing we mentioned as a committee, that we will allow the community to vote and allow for their voices to be heard. I did speak to a lot of students and community who, as he just spoke and said, that they want to keep the name and honor the tradition. So my motion is that we allow the name to stay as Northwest Middle School.
I second that motion.
Motion's been made to keep it Northwest Middle School. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'd like a roll call vote, please.
Okay, roll call vote.
Carol Brown?
All right, yes.
Maxine Drew?
No.
Jane Humphries?
No.
Brenda Jones?
No.
Wanda Brown and Page?
No.
Davina Nguyen?
Yes.
Stacy Yeager?
Yes.
Motion fails.
I'd like to make a motion that we name the school after Carl Bruce.
Second.
Motion been made that we name the school after Carl Bruce. All those in favor? I guess we'll do another roll call vote. I'm sorry.
Carol Brown?
No.
Maxine Drew?
Yes.
Jane Humphries?
Yes.
Brenda Jones?
Yes.
Wanda Brown and Page?
Yes.
Davina Nguyen?
No.
Stacy Yeager?
No.
So the motion carries.
Motion carries, thank you. So the new school would be named Carl B. Bruce Middle School.
Committee, thank you for your hard work. I know it was a challenge. We appreciate all your dialogue. Thank you very much, Dr. Mather, too, for leading them. Ms. Jones, you wanna take a five-minute stretch?
Yes.
We've got a minute for two, almost two and a half, so.
I was gonna ask, can we do that?
Yeah.
We're gonna take a five-minute break, come back, please.
About 7:25.
7:25, please. More than five.
My brother James talked to Mary. Here we go. That's a lot of money.
And I knew it wasn't, but I wouldn't know. I took that one. But that's a lot of money, too.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna, like, second area.
Nobody said it. They didn't think him. And I know they did.
That's what I'm saying, those ten years, they didn't know the call.
Yeah, 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 yeah. She's taking me. I'm going in. I want to know.
Y'all have a good one. Have a good one.
Take care.
They're perfectly deployed. They're deployed.
There you go. I know you're right. Let me run and walk around.
I can't.
You think we can be out there?
Yeah.
There you go. I know you're right. Let me run and walk around.
I can't.
You think we can be out there?
Yeah.
I'm gonna let you fall when I'm in the chair.
Let me run and do that.
I was moving.
I know, I know. It's like a new entry.
Six weeks out of your life.
I won't take that match.
It's your left knee. It'll be driving in two weeks.
I'm serious, you're wrong. It's like wonderful.
James talked to, uh, I don't know, he talked to Larry.
He can leave.
It's top of Mount Hoopton, Eric.
Hey.
100, right now.
Yeah.
What would you do?
Really? You gotta wanna leave off of that.
Okay, give me a fresh house.
190, just then.
Check out the other doors, they can force out some extra mirrors. Maybe like there was definitely a certain, yeah.
I don't know.
On that side.
Did you see?
Now it's one.
Oh?
So much pain.
Whoa.
I didn't think I was gonna be able to hear, I was like.
Two minutes.
Governor.
And you're here?
Really?
Okay, thank you.
No, no.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
Because when I went back, because when I.
I wish I could call Booby.
I know she got the message, I'm sure somebody showed off with it.
Yeah, they always, they'd be, and I had explained to him that it wasn't.
His son was homeless recently.
I'm sure it was. Mm-hmm. Northwest staff will continue to make this issue known.
Oh, I knew it. But see, most of them people that didn't know Linda by far was here in there. Once they were telling me it was unfair that you said, I said, she didn't say we were named, she said we'll send it to a naming committee.
Right.
But they said, you said they would automatically be there, and that's not what she said. And I told them over and over, that's not what she said.
And I ain't gonna worry about this now.
Yeah, I'm just using it. Oh, that was good, I was ready for that break.
We come back together, please.
Okay.
You see it?
It's a little calcium.
It's like a gravel.
Really?
Thank you. We come back together, please.
Okay.
You see it?
It's a little calcium.
Really?
Thank you. Thank you. We come back together, please. Thank you.
Board, we're now ready for item G, and we ask that you approve the renewed proposal for insurance for the 2018-19 year as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Good evening, Board, again.
Good evening.
President, Board members. Shifting gears once again, from bond work now to our district insurance policies. I'm gonna invite Scott Gray, who's a vice president and senior account executive with Aon Risk Services, to speak to you and share an overview with you on the policy renewal. Scott works closely with the school district each year and works hard on behalf of the school district as our goal to best policies, get the board the best policies on all of our insurance coverage. He's gonna give you a high overview of all of those policies, I won't steal his thunder, so I'll turn it over to Scott.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time this evening. As Dr. Mather said, my name is Scott Gray, I'm the senior account executive and vice president for Aon Risk Solutions. I wanted to share with you our results for 2018-19 property and casualty insurance program. Before I do that, I wanted to share with you a couple of things that have been going on in the insurance market over the past year. As you've seen in your packets, if you've had the opportunity to take a look at it, I gave a little history of what's going on, and as I'm sure you all well know, there've been a large amount of catastrophic losses in 2017 that led to rate increases in the property, and most insurance carriers are seeking rate increases. For the first time in more than 10 years, we're starting to see a firming of the market. It's also bled into the casualty market, although not nearly as dramatically, so we're seeing slight little tweaks in the liability and the other casualty lines. Having said that, I feel very good about where we came in this year for the district. And if you look at page four, just to see the exposures that the district has, they've remained fairly static over the last year, and we keep a history of that so we can tell where we're headed all the time. The property values have increased about 3%, that's really due to price per square foot on construction in the area. We do that geologically, or geographically, I'm sorry, to make sure we're getting the right square footages and the right cost per square foot. We also base it on student count, vehicle count, your payroll, number of employees, and so on. This year, it was agreed that we would go to the incumbents and seek as competitive pricing as possible, giving them our expectations that we were looking for below what the market was giving overall, and also going to them early so that we could make sure that we got their responses, and if we weren't happy, we could seek options. Happy to say that from a casualty perspective, everybody came in line with where we expected, we were very pleased with that, and we continued the negotiations with them. The property came back a little higher than we anticipated, we were looking for about a 5% rate increase at a minimum. The carrier who was on it, Travelers, originally came back with a 10 to 12% increase in rate, and so we discussed that further between Dr. Mather's team and my team, and decided to go out to market to get a lasered approach and seek other quotes to compare, and also tell the incumbent that that's what we're doing to try to provide leverage. That worked beautifully, because we've now gotten them down to 5% overall, which is where we were targeting to begin with, along with the 3% of the increase in the values. The other carrier, Glatfelter, who actually is on your casualty program, came in with a slightly higher rate, and so we don't recommend them at this time. But the marketing worked beautifully for us this year in terms of making sure that we got the market where we needed them to be. I think the other important thing to see is if you look at the property rate graph at the bottom of page four, where we've come from back in 2004 to where we are today, at, we were at 13, almost a 14 cent rate per hundred dollars back in 2004. We've consistently been below a nickel rate per hundred dollars now over the past three to four years. Even with their 5% increase, we're only going up to .046. So I think it's important to see the history from that standpoint, to know where we've come from and where we're still going, even though the market's firm. So if you look at page five, you'll see that the estimated premium summaries and the overview with all of those, last year our premiums were $1,160,000, excuse me, $1,160, excuse me, $1,160,365. I was an English major. This year, the renewal that I present to you is $1,197,678 for an overall program change of 3%, which is well below what the market has been showing as a program as a whole. So I present that to you respectfully for consideration for the 2018-19 year. The other thing that I wanted to bring to you for review and consideration is a new product that's on the market that we've been talking to carriers about quite a bit, given the new events that have been taking place over the last few years, and that's active shooter coverage. On the last page of the document that you've been presented.
Okay, thank you.
No, no.
Thank you, thank you.
Cause when I went back.
Cause I wish I could call Booby. Well, I know she got the message. I'm sure somebody showed up with it. Yeah, they always, they'd be, and I had explained to him that it wasn't. His son was homeless recently. Oh, I knew it. But see, most of them people that didn't know Linda by far was her name. Once they were telling me it was unfair that you said, I said, she didn't say we were named. She said we'll send it to a naming committee. Right. But they, they said, you said they would automatically be there. And that's not what she said. And I told them over and over again, it's not what she said. And I ain't gonna worry about this now. Yeah, I'm just using it. Oh, that was good. I was ready for that break. We come back together, please. Thank you.
Board, we're now ready for item G, and we ask that you approve the renewed proposal for insurance for the 2018-19 year as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Good evening, Board again.
Good evening.
President, Board members. Shifting gears once again from bond work now to our district insurance policies. I'm gonna invite Scott Gray, who's a Vice President and Senior Account Executive with Aon Risk Services, to speak to you and share an overview with you on the policy renewal. Scott works closely with the school district each year and works hard on behalf of the school district as our board to best policies, get the board the best policies on all of our insurance coverage. He's gonna give you a high overview of all of those policies. I won't steal his thunder, so I'll turn it over to Scott.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Thank you for your time this evening. As Dr. Mather said, my name is Scott Gray. I'm the Senior Account Executive and Vice President for Aon Risk Solutions. Wanted to share with you our results for 2018-19 property and casualty insurance program. Before I do that, I wanted to share with you a couple of things that have been going on in the insurance market over the past year. As you've seen in your packets, if you've had the opportunity to take a look at it, I gave a little history of what's going on. And as, as I'm sure you all well know, there have been a, a large amount of catastrophic losses in 2017 that led to rate increases in the property, and most insurance carriers are seeking rate increases. For the first time in more than 10 years, we're starting to see a firming of the market. It's also bled into the casualty market, although not nearly as dramatically. So we're seeing slight little tweaks in the, in the liability and the other casualty lines. Having said that, I feel very good about where we came in this year for the district. If you look at page four, just to see the exposures that the district has, they've remained fairly static over the last year. And we keep a history of that so we can tell where we're headed all the time. The property values have increased about 3%. That's really due to price per square foot on construction in the area. We do that geologically, or geographically, I'm sorry, to, to make sure we're getting the right square footages and the right cost per square foot. We also base it on student count, vehicle count, your payroll, number of employees, and so on. This year, it was agreed that we would go to the incumbents and seek as competitive pricing as possible, giving them our expectations that we were looking for below what the market was, was giving overall. And also going to them early so that we could make sure that we got their responses, and if we weren't happy, we could seek options. Happy to say that from a casualty perspective, everybody came in line with where we expected. We were very pleased with that, and we continued the negotiations with them. The property came back a little higher than we anticipated. We were looking for about a 5% rate increase at a minimum. The carrier who was on it, Travelers, originally came back with a 10 to 12% increase in rate. And so we discussed that further between Dr. Mather's team and my team, and decided to go out to market to get a lasered approach and seek other quotes to compare, and also tell the incumbent that that's what we're doing to try to provide leverage. That worked beautifully because we've now gotten them down to 5% overall, which is where we were targeting to begin with, along with the 3% of the increase in the values. The other carrier, Glatfelter, who actually is on your casualty program, came in with a slightly higher rate, and, and so we don't recommend them at this time. But the marketing worked beautiful, beautifully for us this year in terms of making sure that we got the market where we needed them to be. I think the other important thing to see is if you look at the property rate graph at the bottom of page four, where we've come from back in 2004 to where we are today, at, at, we were at a 13, almost a 14 cent rate per hundred dollars back in 2004. We've consistently been below a nickel rate per hundred dollars now over the past three to four years. Even with their 5% increase, we're only going up to .046. So I think it's important to see the history from that standpoint to know where we've come from and where we're still going, even though the market's firm. So if you look at page five, you'll see that the estimated premium summaries and, and the overview with all of those. Last year, our premiums were $1,160,000, 360, oh, excuse me, 100, 160, excuse me, $1,160,000, 365 dollars. I was an English major. This year, the renewal that I present to you is $1,197,678 for an overall program change of 3%, which is well below the, the, what the market has been showing as a program as a whole. So, so I present that to you respectfully for, for consideration for the 2018-19 year. The other thing that I wanted to bring to you for review and consideration is, is a new product that's on the market that we've been talking to carriers about quite a bit, given the new events that have been taking place over the last few years, and that's active shooter coverage. On the last page of the, of the document that you've been presented, there's a, there's an outline of some things from a certain carrier. Now, I don't necessarily recommend or not recommend that carrier, but it gives you an example of some of the coverages that are provided, that are not provided in any other insurance product right now. And from an active shooter standpoint, they will cover things such as crisis center, uh, call centers to be set up in the event of, of a trauma such as that. It also provides for a review and, and an analysis of all of your properties to determine exposures. It also provides for, let me get back to the back so I don't miss any of them, some of the bigger ones. The risk assessment, the sub limit for crisis management services, post-event counseling services are also included in that. 24-hour crisis management service to help the educational institution respond immediately by setting up the call center, advising on emergency communications, and putting in place a recovery plan and arranging the counseling. And then access to services of panels of event responders. I, I present this to you because I'd be remiss with, if I didn't show you what's currently on the market for new events that take place in, in, in our world today. So I humbly present it to you for consideration. We're happy to go out to the market to, to get information and provide you with quotes and more details, but I did want to share with you what we had currently. There are other carriers on the market. Currently, limits from 1 million to 20 million are available, and the minimum premium is anywhere from 5,000 to 7,500 per million, on the first million. One thing I do, I, I wanna vet further, is how that liability compares to the Kansas Torque Claims Act, and if the $500,000 would apply. And I'll be speaking with counsel on that very shortly and, and get some thoughts on that that I can share with you. Any questions?
This funeral expense, is that for the, you know, at someone, is it a limit on it or a cap?
I'm sorry?
Funeral expenses?
There is a cap. I couldn't tell you what it is. I think it depends on the amount of coverage that you purchase.
I mean, for the number of people?
Uh, I don't think this, I don't think it's, it's by number of people.
Okay.
It's by total, total limit, you know, dollar limit.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions?
So if there's no other questions, then, Madam President, there's a couple of things. One, I wanted to thank Scott publicly for all the work he's done on behalf of the Board. 3% rate increase is what he anticipated. That's what we did budget for. We wanted to let the Board be aware of that as we went through the budget, this last budget meeting. So I appreciate that. This is exceptional work. We bring it to the Board early so that we can get your approval and move forward with that. So that would be the first thing we would need is the Board's motion on acceptance of all of our insurance coverage policies. Second thing would be consideration for the active shooter policy. It's not something that's part of this plan at this point. Wanted to bring it before the Board as it is something unfortunately that's happening throughout the country, as Scott indicated, and wanted to know what direction you all wanted us to go. Do you want us to continue to pursue that on behalf of the Board and get additional information or not? So I just need direction on that.
I move we accept the proposed insurance arrangement.
Insurance.
A little louder.
She moved to accept the insurance.
I second it.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the proposed renewal of the insurance coverage. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you. And your next one was?
Guidance and direction from the Board on the active shooter policy, if you'd like for us just to explore that more. Scott indicated he's gonna work with MVP and legal counsel in regards to the Torque Claim Act. You wanna see what level of that cap of that half a million dollars and how that plays into this particular coverage. Just did not want to pursue that. It was not something that the Board was interested in pursuing at this point. It's not coverage that we've had in the past.
I think we need to pursue it rather than just.
More information.
Right.
Let me just ask, there, of the bullet points that is in this active shooter policy now, and chances are it will, it will change as, as more and more incidences occur. So are you saying we have no, no coverage of, as it stands, of these features right now?
Not currently under the, the general liability policies, no. These, these are new types of coverages that are coming out as a result of not being covered under standard liability policies.
I move that we get more information on the active shooter policies available.
Second. Motion been made and seconded that we get more information to get more information. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Board, we're now ready for item H, and we ask that you approve the selection of Miguel Gordon as Construction Manager at Risk for the new central kitchen facility as submitted by Dr. Mather.
Board, I come before you this evening with the final recommendation for the Construction Manager at Risk for the new central kitchen. Just as a reminder, back in March, the Board had asked that we put the RFQ back out to bid, and we did do that. We had seven applicants, firms respond to the RFQ. In March, we asked the Board to select, we made a recommendation and asked the Board to select the top five to move forward into the RFP, a Request for Proposal process. We did, in fact, invite five firms to participate in that per the Board's approval. We asked them to submit the Request for Proposal, believe by May 4. We did interviews with the five potential firms on May 7. So all of the five firms submitted their Request for Proposal applications. They were read independently, as we always do. They were scored independently. We then all interviewed as a committee, all five applicants on the 7th separately, again, scoring the interviews independently, and then compiling all of the scores. On the RFP process, or the Request for Proposal process, it was simply just a, a more detailed examination of all of those firms, two of which had submitted in the Request for Qualifications process. We asked information such as the firm's approach to developing new facilities, their experience in, in planning and constructing new facilities, specific credentials for personnel that would be assigned to the project. We asked for the firm's references, and we do check references and got references back on all five. That was for the scoring process. And then also the identification of any sub consultants that the firm may be engaged with in the particular construction of this central kitchen. The final results came back as Miguel Gordon is the forerunner in the score, the number one scorer. So we're recommending to the Board this evening, Miguel Gordon, to be the Construction Manager at Risk for the construction of the central kitchen. Why Miguel Gordon? Frankly, they came out as the highest score on the process that we believe was fair and equitable for all of the applicants. They're certainly reputable, solid construction firm, as were all of the firms that were involved, and all of them certainly were capable of being a Construction Manager at Risk. But Miguel Gordon is also committed to creating value in all of the projects in which they've worked with. We've had the pleasure of working with them in the past. So they work hard and diligently to help save money and keep us on time. They're also engaged and participate frankly in a lot of community activities, and they support the school system and our students above and beyond just the construction projects. So they're about quality, they're about partnership, and with that, we're making the recommendation from administration for Miguel Gordon to be the Construction Manager at Risk.
I just have one question, please. Because we don't see the language of the contract. Are they allowed to bid then on the work in building the kitchen?
Well, the second, two, two answers to that one question. Next phase of this process will bring before the Board, I hope June 12th, an actual contract if the Board approves Miguel Gordon as the Construction Manager. So you will see the language of the contract. But they also do have self-perform and identified that in the interview as the other construction firms did as well, meaning that they self-perform in certain areas, and they could bid on the construction work. I believe it's in carpentry and, what are the other self-performs? Carpentry and masonry, carpentry? Carpentry. So that would be the one craft or trade that they could do. And that will be outlined in the contract.
Thank you.
You made your last statement before you ended. You said they do a lot like what?
They do a lot like, oh, community engagement?
Yeah.
Oh. I was trying to think back what I was talking about.
Okay.
Obviously, they've, they're a couple of things that, that come to mind, and they had outlined this in their proposal, but they support the Kent City Kansas Foundation for Excellence, the golf tournament, providing a significant donation for student scholarships. They have collected backpacks full of materials that are distributed to our students. They've engaged in internship opportunities for students. They've engaged in collection of, I believe, hats and gloves and coats for students and distributed those. They bring them here to the central office, and they're distributed to our students in an array of other types of community programs.
And who did you say does the scoring?
We had a committee that actually did all of the interviews, and the committee was made up of district personnel. Myself was on there. Names are redacted on the scores. It was myself, the Director of Facilities, Doug Clements, Mark Stublo, the Assistant Director, Brian Draper, the other Assistant Director. Did I miss anybody? Everybody, thank you.
And this, who scored, this is kind of this committee that always does the scoring?
Uh huh.
Cause I think one time I asked you, you said they were scored by outside entity.
Now, the fee structure is scored separately, so we don't score that. The committee that I just mentioned was actually the folks that review the RFQs and the RFPs, score those independently, and score the interview.
Okay.
Now, the fee structure, when we get to the Request for Proposal, has to be sent to Frank Burnham with the Kansas Department of Administration, and he scores the fee structure and provides a score. That score can only be 25% of the overall ranking score, and you'll see that at the bottom of the score sheet, what his scores are for the fee, fee structures that are submitted. We don't even see the fee structures prior to the interviews.
Okay.
He releases those afterwards.
That clarification.
Uh huh.
Hey, Dr. Mather, what's, what are sub consultants?
I'm sorry, said it, Mr. Brown.
What are sub consultants?
Sub consultants might be anybody that they would engage with to assist them. For example, in the central kitchen project, it might be an expert in kitchen equipment, and that can help work with them and with us as a school district to ensure that we're purchasing the adequate equipment for the new construction, at the same time aligning that with having adequate electrical capabilities and things of that nature. So that's, that's the one consultant, sub consultant that will come up a lot in this particular project.
So let me ask you this. Is there anything that would prevent any of the contractors from hiring women-owned, minority-owned businesses? Is there anything that, I, I know, I know that you were kind of, legally, we have no, no influence on them hiring women or minor. Is there anything to prevent them from saying, okay, we don't really have any, we don't really want to hire any? Is there anything to prevent that from happening?
Not sure what you're asking, but we have asked each of the construction firms, including Miguel Gordon, to talk to us about their hiring practices for minority women and locally owned businesses. We obviously, as you had indicated, Mr. Brown, don't set goals. They have met all goals set in all of their projects in the past for those programs that can set goals. Unfortunately, we do not. They understand how important that is to this Board and to us as a school district, and will do everything they can to enhance and, and get as many, not only minority, but women-owned and locally owned businesses engaged in the process.
Okay.
So I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, yeah, it does. It does.
But the expectation is there.
Now, I'm, I'm assuming that there will be other projects that they will bid on down the line. So is there any way we can kind of hold them, not hold them accountable, that's too, too harsh, but is there any way we can measure how, how, how many women-owned or minority-owned?
We absolutely will track that throughout this entire project. They will be responsible for doing that and reporting it to us on each of their monthly invoices, as we do currently with our Construction Manager at Risk, J.E. Dunn for the bond projects.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
I move we accept the recommendation, Miguel Gordon, the Construction Manager at Risk.
I hear a second. Motion been made and seconded to approve Miguel Gordon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing? Hearing none, so ordered. Thank you.
Thank you. To Dr. Mather. Thank you all for being here. Luke, we appreciate your time and investment. Okay, Board, we're moving right along now, and we are ready for item I. And we ask that you approve the contract renewals with outside agencies for special education for the 2018-19 school year as submitted by Dr. Strickland and Dr. Colvin. Board, these are renewals, but because they are new to many of you, I ask Dr. Colvin to be prepared for questions and brief overview.
Good evening, Madam President.
Good evening.
Board members. Dr. Lang. I hope that you've had a chance to review the renewal of the contracts. These are contracts for special education services for students with disabilities. So services provided by these vendors have been determined necessary by the individual students' IEP teams. And so these services are mandated by state and federal law. So I'll take any questions that you may have regarding any of those particular vendors. Try to be as clear as possible in the agenda item as to the purpose.
Could you clarify more about the care staff?
About care staff? Yeah, care staff, First Stat Nursing, and Maxim Health all provide private duty nurses for students who are medically fragile. So most of the students historically have had tracheostomies, so they need to be suctioned quite frequently, and they need a personal nurse with them at any time because they could aspirate.
So they've stayed with the student throughout the day?
Uh huh. And so we contract with those three agencies to provide for continuity of care so that if the child has a nurse at home, then that child, that nurse can come with that child to school.
Ma'am, I have a question about dyslexia. Where would it fall?
It doesn't fall with any of these outside contracts at this time.
Is that something, cause we do have more and more children who are dealing with this?
Correct. So there, we have students with learning disabilities in the area of reading, which is dyslexia, and we are providing those services in the district at this time by our special education teachers.
So we are providing services?
Absolutely. But these are for outside agencies.
Okay.
Services that cannot be provided in the district.
Okay.
But how many students need sign language?
How many students need sign language? 12. They attend our specialized programs at JFK, Eisenhower, and Schlegel.
Thank you.
So for Vibrant Health, I saw that it served all of the schools for, it's a mobile, a mobile hygiene, dental hygiene?
Yes, yes.
So it serves all of our students?
It serves all of our students. So because I oversee the nurses, that is why Score One for Health, as well as Turner House Vibrant Health, are in this grouping.
So is it a rotational thing, or is it, or how does it work?
The nurses meet with Vibrant Health at the beginning of the year, and they are the ones that go back and talk to the building principals regarding scheduling. So currently, this past school year, 19 schools were served. So we're always trying to build that, but they do have a limited capacity in terms of their schedules and the.
So do they identify students, for instance? We have to provide, like, when was the last dental visit? So do they target students who have not had those services?
I believe so because it's a consent basis. So then the parents give consent for their child to participate in this event when it comes to the school. So in theory, I guess, the parents would say that they already have private dental care and would not need to participate. So it is purely voluntary.
Looks really good. I think that's a great...
Any other questions? All right. Now, I take a motion to approve the renewal of the contracts.
Make a motion to approve the renewal of the contracts.
I second.
Motion been made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those disapproving, hearing none, so ordered. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Colvin. I know that's a big relief. Board, now we ask that you accept a report on the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools recruitment results and plan as submitted by Mr. Thompson.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
Madam President. We're going to bring Cynthia Fokes back to the rossom here so she can deliver this report to you.
Good evening, Board members.
Good evening.
Madam President, Dr. Lane. I am excited to have the opportunity to be able to speak with you with a hopes of clarity, to be able to bring some of the factual information that you have been seeking. And so one of the best ways I know how to do that is to begin with some of our recruiting results to date. One of the things that you may not know to some of our new board members is that every September at the very first meeting, I bring a 12-month report to you so that you can see everything in its aggregate form, meaning that because the school district is in session in August, it allows us to get past those first couple of weeks to be able to properly report who is sitting before our students as certified and classified staff members, and additional stats that you often are interested in. And so what I'd like to submit today is just a progress report because we are in May. We are not at the end of that particular point yet to be able to properly put everything into its proper place. So with that in mind, I'd like to start off by saying that we're going to look at, with regard to recruitment, some of the results of the job fairs and career fairs that we did attend, along with those colleges whom we are hiring from that we did not go to, but we have a relationship with. We are going to also talk about some of the results to date with our Grow Your Own programs, and Shelley will be able to come forward with that. And then I'm going to be able to come back to you with just some final comments regarding where we are to date, where we're hoping to go over the next two months as we get into the summer. So with that in mind, part of our recruitment events, just to give some context to this, in 2015, at the end of that 2015-2016 school year that's not presented here, we actually attended 33 events. I began my employment here around 2016, or the beginning of 2016. And so what you see are concentrated efforts from a recruitment standpoint to increase and go to what would be considered as relevant and hopefully fruitful opportunities within college and community events that would allow us to not only set up a booth, not only allow us to have interviews on the spot, not only allow us to be able to drive more applicants to our website and therefore increase the amount of applications that we have before us at any time so that our hiring supervisors have the opportunity to be ready when they have an opening. So in 2016-2017, you see that we went to 46 different places. We provided that information in the last September. Where we are to date here with all of the outside activities that we've been to thus far is that we attended 44. We had hopes of attending 48, but four of those events were canceled due to ice storms and things that we had earlier in the fall, or the winter. So some of the things that I wanted to provide you is the actual certified hires that we had as of last Thursday. And the reason that I am providing that is to let you know we are no longer at 105. There were some active, actual offers that were extended even over the weekend, over the holiday weekend, and all day today. So this number is no longer the right number. I don't have that final count, but would be more than happy to provide that to you. The reason that I also bring up June 1st is that that is something that I spoke about last month, in that this is a state-dictated deadline, and that deadline moves depending on when that formula is set up. But primarily for this year, the important thing to know is we're not at the end of receiving our resignations. So what I'm presenting today is what we have thus far. The next several slides, I provided in detail for you so that you would know again, and I don't want to say it ad nauseam, to date, as of 5/24, where we have hired from. And please remember that the list that you see on the next slides, couple of slides, include those areas, colleges, business events, community events, that we had an opportunity to gather applicants. And it also includes those areas that we did not have the opportunity to go to colleges, but we have established some type of rapport with that college or with those business events to send us applicants, and then therefore the hiring managers had the opportunity to make those decisions. So while I won't go through each and every group on any of these pages, I wanted to make sure that you knew that this is where a number of our hiring, our certified individuals are coming from, primarily teachers. But it does include also some of our other certified staff, such as our counselors, special education support staff, and so on. On this second slide, I'd like to just point out that you would, you will see on the expense report that you asked us to prepare, that there are a couple of places that we didn't have an opportunity to go to, such as Northwest Missouri State. It was one of those areas that had to cancel their career fair. But for the first time, you also see that we traveled, hopefully, from two, or two, two major universities that we did not have a presence at, and that was the University of Oklahoma and Oklahoma State. And so I wanted to just simply point out that there are some immediate results that we're beginning to see from some of those areas, as you have encouraged me to look more forward-thinking and expanding where we are going outside of, say, from two years ago, to those 33 regular places that our school district had traditionally visited. You also see, we go as far as, we don't go as far, but California State University, Colorado State, those were not places that we traveled, but yet we have had some success within the past just by making sure that we submit all of our job postings to a variety of different areas. Haskell Indian Nation, we are trying our best to make sure that every group is represented, and they know how to get in touch with us should they have someone that actually matriculates from there and has an articulation agreement with another school. But those individuals in that particular instance from Haskell actually started out there, and we were able to hire them in a certified staff area. The other thing I'd like to point out on this particular slide is that Michigan State, Western Michigan, wow, we didn't go there. But what I will say is that two years ago, there was a nine-college event, predominantly of historically black colleges from that particular upper area. And it was at the end of a convention, and they allowed colleges to come in and actually participate in a job fair before that convention was over, of student teachers, and teachers who were available. We didn't come back with anyone two years ago. But because of the fact that, and we haven't been for two years, but because of some of the continued relationships that we've had with those entities, we were actually, were beginning to see that some individuals are beginning to be interested in the Midwest region from that. And last but not least, you are aware from the expense report that we provided, or the breakdown of that, that we did attend New Orleans and Louisiana. And I know I'm not saying it right. They told me that as soon as I got off the plane. But we had an opportunity to visit with an alumni from that particular area, and they actually were interested and shared with us some of the opportunities that they wanted to be involved in, and that has worked out successfully. So you might want to know, what do we do now? Because we know we have vacancies. We know we're waiting for this date to occur on Friday. And we know that magically, everything doesn't stop on June 1st. There will be some individuals due to family situations that may decide to retire during the summer, that may need to move with their families, that will cause vacancies to occur. And so our work does not stop. The external work of going out of state has stopped at this point. But the internal work that needs to happen throughout the greater Kansas City area, and now drawing people to us, is really what we have become known for here in Kansas City, Kansas. Last year, during this, the summer months, I say, we actually sponsored seven different career fairs. They were all here at the central office. And I'm going to share with you a little bit later, after Shelley comes and presents some information when I come back to the podium, some of the things that we're going to do now in terms of not only having some of those internal career fairs here, but we're also going to go on the road and make sure that we hit around the community and go with, and make sure that we can get out to where people can get. We think central office is a prime location, but we also know that we need to do more to get out into the community. So I'll share a little bit with you about that. But just to let you know, we have a fair coming up on Thursday, May 31st. And then we are going to be on Friday at Teach for America for the first time at a major career fair that they're having, where they have already identified math and science individuals along with some other areas that we may be in need of. So with that in mind, I'm going to turn it over to Shelley, and then I'll be back.
Before you leave, can we ask the question now?
Sure.
Okay, now, you gave us the data, male, female. Can you give us some information in terms of ethnicity? How many Asians? How many, I saw the one Indian, but how many blacks? Can you give us that data, please?
I can give you that data more when they complete. There is a separate form that you must keep separate that one has as they go through the hiring process. And some of those individuals have not completed all of that information. It's a self-reported based on ELC, am I answering?
No, because, I mean, you say you interviewed them, you saw them. So to me, you had a visual.
Right.
They may not fill it out, but you see. I'm looking at you in your face.
I'm not able to visually be able to state what one's ethnicity could or could not be, just by seeing.
Okay, yes and no. We'll forego that. You say it's coming later. Next question. One complaint that we had from a lot of people is that you guys weren't the timeliest individuals in terms of getting back to people and allowing them to know, am I going to get this job? Because we went on the recruitment thing. Seemed like you guys were having a hard time. So we got people to come in. They said they applied, then we got into that big debate, did they? Did they not? And the issue was, they went on and went back to their old schools because they never heard anything back in a timely manner. So is that something we can work on? That when people, you got to let them know something because they're all sitting around waiting, I never heard from them. I said, well, they'll get back with you. No, we didn't hear a thing. So I went ahead and took the job back because they're waiting, and they didn't hear anything. I mean, at least let me know, we're still considering, we'll get back with you in two weeks, something. When you don't hear anything, you just assume they threw that in the trash. I might as well move on.
If you're speaking of individual situations, I would love to have that information in terms of the individuals that may have given you their respective names, because I would love to be able to follow up on that. If you're talking about different groups of applicants, I think I heard something about student teachers and wanting to make sure that we engage them and work with them. We actually had orientation for those, for student teachers two different times. We asked them to immediately put in their application. One of the things that I think didn't work as well, that did work well during the 2016-2017 year, if I am not mistaken, and I know it's filed in one of the reports that we had to give in 2016-2017, we had 65 or 69 students, and we hired close to 50 of them, student teachers. Because we were out and about on the day that we actually offered mock interviews to some of those student teachers to come in, where we could first engage them before they ever went back to these career fairs because we wanted to make sure they knew that we wanted them, there is a process that we attempt to go through, and we want to make sure that our principals are part of that. So getting recommendations from them, subsequently hiring those students at this mock interview, that was the one thing that I would say this year didn't work as well as last year. And so that is something that we are definitely making sure that we have all angles covered. What we actually did, however, is that, to tell you what happened, we actually, the HR directors and the HR personnel who could make those offers, I had scheduled them to help me to be out at various career events that were happening. And it all happened on the same day that we had invited the students in for their mock interviews. And so we didn't all get back in order to be able to engage them and work with them right then on that evening. So in order to make up for that, then we did contact those individual students and made sure, if you were a member of this particular college, then we wanted to make sure that we saw you at that career fair, whereas before, we could just handle a lot of that here once they came off of their mock interviews. Because those mock interviews are all conducted by principals. And that's another part of the recommendation process, that we get directly from the principals so that we could cut down on that time. And it did work really well in 2016-2017. But that was the one evening where all of us were scattered at other events.
Well, two statements. One, it's critical, and there's data out there to back it up, that it's important for children to see themselves. We need to work on the diversity part. You know, we keep coming in, and you don't see much, and people keep asking us, now do they ever stop and think about how important that is? Good question. We keep saying that, you know, and that's why I asked the question about diversity. We need to know. The kids need to see themselves. And the timely part is critical. We're not as timely as we should be. And that's just a statement. I don't have that as a question.
Okay. Let me follow up on that idea. These numbers, hired in 2018-19 to date, Western University, Truman State, whatever, these are recent graduates, right?
Recent graduates and experienced people who were invited to come back to those college fairs because they opened it up to both.
Okay. One of the points we're, I'm talking about, however, are, and the timeliness, and the concern of hiring experienced teachers. When people submit their applications, and, let's say, in March, and they haven't been acted on by April, mid-April, and then with the vacancies that you have, clearly have, my issue is you don't hire experienced teachers, and that there seems to be a tendency to hire first-year teachers, I mean, first-year graduates. So there's a disconnect someplace. And there's a disconnect, maybe there's a clink in the machinery, but I'm concerned that something is happening that you're not hiring people who are experienced with credentials with these vacancies that are posted, and they are denied, denied employment. So I think you need to look into that. But you know what is happening. And we will... And, and, and we will discuss it probably later, but it's, you know, it seems like you, you'd rather have higher people fresh out of college than experienced teachers that we know have applied for vacancies.
Actually, we make sure that we expand and hit both spectrums. We request to be available to go to those alumni events. We make sure that if information is given or known about how to get in touch with individuals, those actions are for both. Those actions are for both. When you look at the aggregate of a two-year process, at least that I can attest to only being here.
No, I'm not talking about two years, I'm talking about right now. From March to, to now. That experienced teachers with seemingly outstanding credentials were not hired. And there's, there's something wrong with that. And we will continue to question what's wrong with that. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna shift gears just a little bit, and I wanted to share with you this evening about our Teaching Fellows program, which is a part of our Grow Your Own program. And I, I know that many of you are new on the board, so for those of you who aren't, this might be a little bit redundant. But just to let you know, we started, brought the Teaching Fellows back again, they'd been here from 2000 to 2010, we brought them back, starting in the 2015, 2000, I'm sorry, 2016, 2017 school year. And we started out, had sixty-one applicants, and we chose nineteen of those. Just wanted to kind of give you an update and show you, there were ten males, nine females in that group, and ten of those were diverse participants, fifty-three percent. As of today, fourteen of those nineteen remain. And just to, that's, so that's seventy-four percent of that group remains. That's, we had some reasons for leaving. One got married, moved to Georgia. We had one that was non-renewed. We had one that, or actually, two, that decided to forego the Fellows program and go directly into transition to teaching program at Fort Hays. And so they left our program to go do their program. And the other one, be honest with you, I don't remember what the fifth one was. But we did, we did, oh, I know, that particular person was, she started out with us and then resigned at the beginning of September for family reasons. So, but we hope, we were hiring in math, science, and business, that very first year, we were focusing on math and science and those high, that's two particular high-need areas. In that group, five of them went into the mat, the Masters of Arts in Teaching with Pitt State, and then we had fourteen on the KCK certificates. Then jumped to, this year, we had our second cohort start, and we had forty-eight applicants apply, fifteen of those were chosen, six males, nine females, six of those were diverse for forty percent. And again, fourteen out of fifteen remained, we just had one who resigned to move closer to her family. And so, subjects that we hired for that were being taught this year were science, English Language Arts, Spanish, Social Studies, and Business. We're very happy that we had ten of those go into the Masters of Arts program. That's really where we would like for them to go. We want them to be able to go ahead and get that Kansas license, move from the certificate. And then we have four that are on their certificates. So we had our third group start actually today, first day. And they were very excited this morning when they were there at eight o'clock, very bright-eyed this morning with Dr. Nix. But we really had an increase in the number of applicants this year, and we've started to become known for our Teaching Fellows program. We get calls from all over the city, we get calls from other states, "Hey, we hear you have this Teaching Fellows program, what's it about?" And so we actually had eighty-three applicants this year. Twenty-two of those were chosen, sixteen of them were males and six were females. We had a lot of, a large participation of males this year, which was great. Ten of those are diverse participants for forty-five percent. Subjects they're hired for are science, math, Spanish, social studies, business, and computer science. And eighteen of those have chosen to go into the Pitt State program, and four will be on certificates. And to be, the biggest reason they don't go into the mat program is many times that their content doesn't match. But for the most part, they will, they will match with a content that we do need, they just may not match the exact classes that are, that are expected by Pitt State. We have many that go back and take those classes before they even start the program. So overall Teaching Fellows cohort, and Dr. Lane and I had an opportunity to share this with the Kansas State Board of Education a few weeks ago, and shared with them our overall result to the Fellows program, 'cause as you know, we have to have our certificates approved by that board. So we have currently fifty-six Teaching Fellows, thirty-two males, twenty-four females, twenty-six diverse participants for forty-six percent. Our retention rate is eighty-two percent. And, and that is very, a very high retention rate, considering that those individuals are going in, first of all, with no teaching experience, secondly, having not had any teacher education program, other than their six weeks that start their summer institute, and then of course they're taking classes. Cynthia spoke to this just a little bit ago, but the student teachers and practicum students, we had fifty-four student teachers assigned in our district, and fifteen of those have been hired to date. We do know that we still have some that are out in that pipeline going for interviews, but we currently have fifteen. And then I just wanted to share with you kind of the other alternative certification programs that we have been working with. Teach for America, this year we had three teachers who came from the Teach for America program, and all three of those are returning. Visiting International Teachers, we had three, that, and all of those are returning except for one. And then Kansas Transition to Teaching Grant, that's the program through Kansas State that we have the grant with, the individuals that go through a year-long master's program, working in our schools, they do their internship and their student teaching with us. We have hired seven of those, it's seven out of the, I believe it's nine. And we have started the Parent-to-Teacher Program, we have five individuals, two that will finish up this year, and three that are starting their program this year. We've been working very hard with two universities, Pitt State, Wichita State, and then we're starting to have conversations with Emporia State around this, the Parent-to-Teacher Program. And then, share with you a little bit, we had a meeting just today with Emporia State, and talking to them about partnering on our Two Plus Two program for our high school academies with Kansas City, Kansas Community College, and Emporia State, so that they can take all of their coursework here, face-to-face in the Kansas City area with their program. So those are kind of some of the other things that we're working on. And then also just wanted to share with you some of the advertising that we had done. We did radio ads, several of them, on KPRS, and then through, and also Cumulus Media, some of those stations there. We did five guest speaker segments. Cynthia did most of them, I did one, and there's a reason for that, I'm sure, she's much better at it. We also had, we were able to find different organizations or different media that would help support us in recruiting diverse candidates. So hbcu.com is an organization that we have partnered with, who will actually post our jobs. We give those jobs to them, they post those on their site. The National Minority Update is just an online magazine, but we advertised in there, that was, they don't post jobs. And then we partnered with Education Week, which is the largest education organization. We have also partnered with them, and they come in, and, and they will post our jobs up on their sites as well. So in addition to that, we did classroom visits to intrated teaching classes, we did that, the Community Col-, KCK Community College, Johnson County Community College, and Emporia, in an effort to recruit student teachers and intern students to come and come in, be a part of our district, and learn about our district, but also get their hours for observations or their internship, or even student teaching. Okay. You have any questions with the segment that I covered?
Do you ever go to Kansas City, Missouri, UMKC?
Yes.
Okay, 'cause I, I didn't see you list it, I didn't know.
It was on, it was on the other list. We haven't gone to UMKC for their intrated teaching classes, we have not done that. But we, but we do recruit over there for their teachers.
Okay, and you said you had twenty-six diverse participants. Can you roughly tell us, were they Hispanic, were they Indian, did you have, have any idea?
In which?
You said overall Teaching Fellows cohorts, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. You had fifty-six Teaching Fellows, you had thirty-two males, twenty-four females, and you said you had twenty-six diverse participants.
Mm-hmm. I have, I have not looked specifically at their racial, I can look at them and tell you that...
Well, I mean, when you just said twenty-six, I just assumed, and I'm sorry, I just assumed you could give me the numbers.
They have to self-identify. I can, I could look at them, yes, but I don't try to identify what they're going, they're going to identify by.
Okay, no, no, I understand. You just said twenty-six diverse participants.
Yes.
So I just thought, when you said that...
I understand.
You could give me the numbers. So, again, I, I took you literally, and I'm sorry.
No, no, I understand what you're saying now, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to offer something for that. We did report on that in January or February, because the first group that Shelley is speaking of would be the 2016, 2017, that we already, they're here, they've been here for a year. And so we did report on that, we'd be happy to go back and get those same stats. And then the twenty-seven, the individuals, again, 2017, 2018, have been here. So we could go find, we do, and we did report that, but we'd be happy to pull it together for you.
Well, I don't remember that coming, but if you would give it to us, I would appreciate it, okay?
The other thing I'll share with you is that the Fellows are in their orientation week. And so part of that orientation is, is HR and paperwork, and there's a lot of that information that will be more specific, and as we work with them, we'll have access to that a little bit easier. But we'll be glad to report for you.
Let me follow up. It, it, you're, you're providing the data. So when you say, ten, ten diverse participants, six diverse participants, twenty, thirty, forty, it seems strange that you can't provide any clarity. And I mean, you, you, this is your data. So when you put the numbers down...
That's a visual. For us to be able to see the data, we cannot see what they say in our system as to how they identify. We don't see that until they are hired and they complete the paperwork.
So these aren't real numbers?
No, they're visual.
The Teach, the part that Shelley just reported on, in contrast to what I reported on earlier, I'm giving you a progress report, which is what I was asked for, for current, what we're in, and that we haven't completed, that we haven't been through the whole twelve months. What Shelley was reporting on with the Teaching Fellows was two years of those, those groups already being here through the hiring process. And then, the group that started today will complete more of their information, so that we can verify and be able to give more of that to you. So one is about three years of a group. And what I was reporting on is who currently, right now, is going through the process to become 2018, 2019 certified individuals.
And thank you for that explanation, but the simple answer is, you put the numbers down, and when we ask, six diverse participants, you're not coming up with any clarity of, you put the numbers down. Are you saying?
Right.
And you're saying you have no clue what these numbers mean?
The numbers for the first two years.
I mean, for all of, all your data.
But the first two years are the ones we're going to definitely know. It is this third group that we have right now who has not completed the entire hiring process, because we're in the process of that. That's when we'll go back and review how they self-identified. So to, to clarify, the first two groups, we have a definite number. We have a definite, this is the diverse candidate. On the second one, no, that was my visual, and I wrote that number there. But that doesn't mean that we won't go back and get more specific information.
But it also means you can't remember what you wrote, why you wrote that down?
No, I didn't say that.
That's what we're asking.
I think what, just to see if I can provide clarity, the third-year cohort is based on visualization. Once they go through the HR process, they will select the ethnicity that they choose. Mr. Goheen, please remind us, at what point is the school district allowed to ask about racial background and identity?
Yeah, you can't ask during the application process, it's only after they've been hired, you can ask them to self-report or self-identify on a form. And that form is not kept with the personnel file, they're kept as two separate things. So you're not supposed to be able to, in the personnel file, look and determine race or ethnicity.
Well, Mr. Goheen, then why would, why would you put anything like this on, on a report?
I, I didn't prepare the report, but...
No, we know you didn't prepare.
But you could, you could track, you could track people who have come through the process by ethnicity after they've been hired, if you wanted to do that. You couldn't do it for the applicants.
So... Dr. Wen, the reason it's on there is because the staff anticipate that you want to know that, so that's why they're providing it.
You were requested to bring the information.
Okay, but it would help us out. I prefer you not to even put that on there. You put it there, and nobody can give a clear answer. So until you get the answer, it would make sense to put it on there. 'Cause right now, you put it on, and nobody seems to know. Now, we understand what the law says, but it just makes sense not to even put that on until after you get the interview and they tell you, "He said you could track," then give us that information. 'Cause when you put it up there, that's, we want to know, well, what is this? And then everybody's saying, "Well, I don't know, I, I..." We can't, it just makes sense, don't put it on there at all, until you get the information.
So just to be clear, Ms. Brownlee Page, until the, it is verified, do not do visual representation for the board.
Well, according to what he said, you could do it after you interview them.
Just want to be clear on what you're asking from the staff.
After they're actually...
Yeah, after they're hired.
After they're employed.
Can you give us the stats? 'Cause right now, nobody seems to know it, and there's a question mark. But I'm saying, after you hire, make sure we follow the law.
So it's after they're hired and they're given an application, it's when they come in, they fill out the HR paperwork, one of the forms they're given, ask them to self-identify as to race or ethnicity. Now, they don't have to, they don't have to do that.
Yeah, yeah, you can say...
They can say no.
We had thirty, five refused to say it, I don't have a problem with that. But if you put it up here now, of course we're gonna ask. And then it's just a little disheartening, you don't get a clear answer, but we won't debate that. After you hire, you go through the proper protocol, then you said, did I misquote you? You could track if they agree to it.
You can, and you, in fact, you have reports that you turn in to, I think it's the state, it might be to EEOC, I can't remember which one, but it is a, it is not a report that identifies individuals, it is a global report that identifies employees as a whole.
Okay.
And you'll, you'll remember, Board, that you received that report just about a month ago, the EEO five report. So just to clarify, so the staff know, moving forward, only present verified data on the ethnicity. So thank you for that. Is there other information you'd like to share tonight?
I have, I have a question on the slide relating to student teacher and practicum students. On the slide, it says fifty-four student teachers are within Kansas City, Kansas, and fifteen student teachers have been hired to date. So according to this statistic, three point six percent of our student teachers are being hired, ninety-six point four are unhired by the district. Could you give me clarity on maybe why it's only three or four percent? Where are these student teachers coming from? Is it an expectation? I'm, I'm talking about the slide that says student teacher and practicum. Okay, is it, are they from out of the district and we're not hiring? Could you clarify why that three, that we're only retaining about four percent of the student teachers that we're, that's in our classes?
So, what I tried to clarify in the beginning is that we are still processing student teachers through the system, and, but you asked for us to give clarification of where we are at this point in time. So I would say to you that until, again, because I'm a few months ahead of the normal September annual report that I give to the board in full, to be able to show you where we ended up, this is where we were to date as of May, in terms of the student teachers who were in our district. It doesn't mean that some of the people who have been hired of that hundred and five weren't also teachers from other schools on the areas that you saw, that came from KU, that came from our PDS schools in Emporia, that came from... that came from KU, that came from our PDS schools in Concordia, that came from our PDS schools in UMKC. So the point is, is that we are still processing. We're still asking for them to sign on the dotted line, to know that we got them. And that information, you'll have more clarity about once we get to the end of the process. I just wanted to be clear, as clear as possible, to let you know what we had verified up until May 24, in terms of what was happening. So here's what happened. If you, when we spoke about that mock interview day, where it gives us the first opportunity to be able to work with them outside of the orientation programs that we have for them. We have one in fall, one in the spring. And after each point in time, the college can decide when they'd like to have mock interviews. At that mock interview, that is something that, a tool that we use to almost have like first bids before they ever get out and about. And so in 2016, 2017, we were able to have enough individuals here, principals, hiring managers, to make some of those recommendations right on the spot. Others were able to give us their thoughts after that mock interview happened. What I said this year that happened is that several of us were not able to be at that mock interview that occurred back in February, because we were dispensed at other places on that particular night that KU chose for their students to meet here so that we could do so. And so we are just now beginning to, not beginning, we continue to follow them through, whereas I would have been able to say, of this group, we had 30, or we had 25 immediately in one night, which only allowed us then to go after that other group of that 54 over the next few weeks. So I'm simply saying that we believe this number will increase. It's just that we had to go through other means to make sure that they knew we were interested in them, that we wanted them, and we desired for them to be with us.
The other thing that we are considering, it's to get the number up, is that we may have to have a specific, we may have to have a specific recruiting fair just for our student teachers to come in and interview. That's really a service to them, but also to us, because they get the opportunity and a chance to practice interviewing. But it also gives us a chance to have that first screening interview with them, even before they may go back to their university to interview, so, on a campus interview. So that's one of the things that we have discussed about doing as another recruiting event.
Because when we talked about this previously, it was the March 15 date, or there was a date in March that was the goal to be hired, or something in March as a timeframe for people to be notified they're hired into the district.
I'm not sure about that particular date.
Is there a certain time where we can get it a little earlier than, because it's now at the end of May? Is, I was just, and maybe, like you said, just the process can be done earlier?
And it normally, it normally is. The first orientation, for example, in the fall usually occurs in October, that we were on time. There were not as many individuals at that time who were able to attend due to some conflict. Then we have another one, they get here as soon as we open up in January, and we had it three weeks later. And so for some of our hiring managers, they wanted a little bit more time to assess what they were doing in the classroom before they made their recommendation. But that was the one that more of the individuals come to from the first semester as well as the second semester. And they can come in then, because they will not have graduated in December. So that group tends to be that February group, when we do it within 21 days of them starting in January, to be student teaching here, and the other ones as well from December that are now ready. We go ahead and extend those conditional offers. And I think the other thing I hope can be kept in mind is that the vacancies have to be solidified. We can't, we can't move, we can't go out and hire 300 people and then wait for the vacancies to catch up with that, because we owe, we would owe all 300 of those individuals a spot if we said that we're offering, and would like you to sign a conditional offer with us, pending the board's approval. So we have to balance as much as we can as we go throughout October, all the way through March, before we ever begin to see the resignations and vacancies, and that they truly become then a true vacancy that we know we can hire for, for 2018, 2019. As budgets are improved, as you clarified, how many FTEs we can have, all of that comes into factor. And we are constantly balancing against a true vacancy when it becomes a true vacancy for the next school year. And that's the part that we're getting right now.
That was my question. If, if teachers have until June 1st to submit their resignation, and someone applies for a science teacher, let's say, in March, but until you get that resignation, you cannot offer them a job, correct?
Correct.
So you're kind of in a hard spot there, because you have to, like you said, you have to wait for the resignations to come before you can make a firm offer to someone. And in the meantime, they may be accepted a job somewhere else.
Let me follow up with a couple of questions. Mr. Goheen, what, and it may not be the date she's referring to, but what date do you have to notify teacher for reemployment?
You've got to notify the teachers for reemployment by the, I think it's the 3rd Friday in May. But you've got to back that up, because you have to give them notice and opportunity for any kind of process.
Speak up, could you a little bit?
I'm sorry, I forgot I didn't have the mic right by me, I apologize. I believe the statutory deadline for the final notice is the 3rd Friday in May. But you have to back that up to account for the due process and determination and non-renewal procedure that the board has. So if the board is going to elect to not have somebody return, we send that notification out backed up to, I can't remember if it's the first part of April or somewhere around that time period. That might be the date, that might be the date you're thinking of.
Yeah.
But the teachers get till June 1st to notify the district that they're not going to return next year.
Thank you. And let me ask you about the statement you made about vacancies. Understandably, the process you just noted, and Ms. Humphries asked you to verify, is correct. But if you have a position open on your website, is that not a vacancy that is open for people to apply for?
Yes, we do have vacancies that are backed up by knowing where the actual vacancy is, or it's not, those go up and down throughout the month, because if, if a principal decides that, or our current teachers who are within buildings have an opportunity to transfer, or they have a couple of endorsements and now wish to no longer be in English, but because they have other endorsements attached to their license, and they can now teach biology, and lo and behold, this principal now has a biology.
Right.
Well, of course, they would want to be able to move that individual into that biology, because they know that individual.
That's too complicated of an answer, but the simple question is, don't complicate it.
Visually, this is what I think about on a daily basis to get to that point.
The simple question is, if on our website, there is a job posted as being open, is that not an open position?
It is open. And if we could look at how many of those openings have occurred in the past three weeks that are firm, that I did not know about in February or December, when I was out there trying to gather a pipeline, an HR term of pipelining means you're trying to gather those applications in anticipation that we will be ready to receive and move. But the timing of that vacancy is designated by the timing of a set number of resignations or retirements. It's the only thing I can go with to be responsive.
Right, I'm just talking about the ones that are already posted. So you have a slide that says certified hires as of 5/24 is 105.
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have an idea of how many of those hires came directly from your out-of-state recruitment trips?
I can designate the out-of-state versus in-state. I didn't do that tonight, but I can designate it. I know that, it is my impression, and I hate to be about impressions, I want to be factual so that I can be clear. But it is my impression that at least half of them are coming from outside of Kansas City, Kansas.
At this point, can we ask that, because the date is not June 1st, and we'll have a meeting at 12, could you just bring us something back as close as possible after that date?
About the vacancies, the true vacancies?
The true vacancies and the true hires.
And it will be ongoing, but...
Yes, but I mean, at that point.
If that it is ongoing, I'd be more than happy to come back, if that's what you'd like me to do.
Yes, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, team, good information.
Okay, we're now at the consent agenda.
Madam President, I'd like to pull D from the consent agenda. D like dog.
Okay.
And I, I just had a clarification. A parent contacted me relating to any policies we have for students staying out overnight, or is there a curfew? And I, and I just needed clarification because of some information that was out in the community about sponsored activities that go late into the night.
Is that related to your question you forwarded to me today?
Right, yeah.
My understanding and follow-up is that that evening activity was advertised for parents to realize that it was a shut-in activity that would go until 4:00 a.m. Bus transportation was provided, therefore, students were not allowed to leave until the bus left. You do have a transportation policy that requires students use buses when buses are provided and not drive private vehicles.
And so this will also apply to the upcoming trip for the out-of-town as well? They have to stay with the group and...
That's correct. If it's student, school-sponsored transportation and activities, then they are required to stay with the group.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Pulling D, anything, anything else we need to pull? Then I'll take a motion for the consent agenda minus D.
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Okay, then we'll take D.
I'd like to make a motion to table any action on D and discuss it in executive session, and with all that language that Mr. Goheen provides to Ms. Westfall.
We don't have an executive session on the agenda, so we'd need first a motion to amend the agenda.
Okay. I move to amend the agenda to establish the existence of an executive session.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded to establish an executive session for this meeting. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered.
And then, Mr. Goheen, I have a motion to move D into that slot.
Yeah, correct. Which we, I mean, we could do now if you guys want to. I mean, you could make the motion now to go into executive session, or we could wait until we got everybody, everything else done, so people can go home.
Out of respect for the staff, I'd like for us to hold a tree so they can go home.
Yeah, I said that, so I...
No, I was just clarifying one way or the other, I think that makes more sense, but...
Correct. I then move, move D into executive session, take that up after we've dealt with other items of business. That's the motion.
Second.
Motion been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered, thank you. Payment of bills for K-12 and library.
Madam President, I just have one more question to Dr. Mather. Have you found out anything about Midwest Higher Education Compact?
Yes. Don't thank me, I'm not taking the credit. I'll let Wayne speak to that, I think you can come up to the mic, Mr. Correll. Did you, right away?
And again, the question, the question is that we are always presented with that compact being a tool to use that reduce cost of hardware, software, and all those things. So, thank you.
We are eligible to use that and utilize that. We utilize many cooperative agreements, US Communities. We can piggyback off the Kansas State contracts. So that is one of the tools we can use. Whenever we are going to purchase for technology-related items, we can request a quote from them and compare it to our current Kansas State contract and any other contract we want to purchase from.
I think that would be the prudent thing to do, and then either prove them right or wrong.
Right, absolutely. We do comparative shopping on most things that we buy.
Thank you.
Okay, sure.
Thank you, Mr. Correll. So historically, we have not been involved in that, but with the pleasure of the board, we will absolutely do that and move forward, if that's what you all would wish to do.
And I've spoken with other districts.
Historically, we had not, so we looked into it, and we certainly are capable of doing that.
We will add that to our portfolio of cooperative agreements that we pick from.
So, Madam President, do you need a motion, or that's just a general?
At the beginning of July, you're going to be presented with a recommendation asking that we use various cooperative agreements that will be identified in that recommendation, and that will be added to the list.
After you've researched, to see if it actually is, is cost-saving.
We'll ask you for permission to use that at the beginning of July.
All right, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Okay, payment of bills.
So moved.
Motion been made and seconded, payment of bills. All those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposing, hearing none, so ordered. Board discussion. KSAB appointments to the Board of Directors, Legislative Committee, and the Nominating Committee. I presently serve as the, on the Board of Directors. We need someone for the nominating committee and legislative. Danny, were you?
I did nominate in last year, yeah.
You did nominate? And we need somebody for legislative. And it tells you when they meet. Someone wanting to volunteer. Nominating only meets once, once. That's in September. And as you see, the legislative meets when they meet.
I can do nominating again.
Okay, can I have somebody for the Legislative Committee?
So where will the meeting take place?
It says it right there, Legislative, August 25th. And...
Okay, but it didn't say where, is it?
It's in Topeka, at the KSAB Board. We need a representative.
Madam President, I'll volunteer.
Thank you, Maxine. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Maxine will do the Legislative Committee. All right, thank you. I'll look at the timeline.
I think the timeline is the same as what the board has seen...
We haven't changed that.
With that change in the report on substitutes coming at the next meeting.
Board calendar, it's there for your pleasure. For the next board meeting, we have a retirement. In fact, the 30th, at Ridden Center for the District Retirement.
Tomorrow.
Yes. And then the 2nd, we have a special board education meeting for the superintendent count, 8 o'clock here at the central office. And then you see the others. Please govern yourself, and we'll go into executive session.
Do we need your personnel exception?
Where?
You'll have to just do it off the top of your head, as you remember.
Oh.
Recession to executive session for...
To protect, to protect the privacy of an individual pursuant to the Kansas statute, and for alone...
How long do you want?
10 minutes.
10 minutes.
10 minutes. Anybody need to stay?
No.
Nobody needs to stay? We'll go in?
With action to follow.
With action to follow. We'll start at, 10 minutes, 5 minutes. I'm sure they want to go home, they can get out in 5 minutes. To begin at 8, 4... To begin at eight four, eight fifty-five, and to come out at ten oh five, nine oh five. I was going to make a whole hour. Can I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion been made and second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming and staying tonight, we appreciate you all.